I didn't notice that the meeting had been posted on Township website and sent to the newspaper record. The agenda has also been posted on Township website and holding board at the municipal building at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. The agenda items will not necessarily be heard nor listed, and the meeting will not continue substantially past ten thirty P M.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Paul. Ms. Roundtree?
Yeah.
Ms. Pope?
Yeah.
Pope Lo?
Here.
Ms. Kingsley?
Here.
Mr. Maderos?
Here.
Mr. Crowe?
Here.
Mr. Monaco? Mr. Sternheim? Mr. Leo? Mr. Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Sulfaro?
Here.
Mr. Trost?
Here.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting?
Summer.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, adoption of resolution, application number S P dash eight, S nineteen A, Rodac Homes One LLC, formerly El Sheik Enterprises LLC, four ninety-five Springfield Avenue, block two oh six, lot fourteen. Good evening, though.
Alright, Mr. Chair, this is the written memorialization of the action that was taken by the board at the last meeting. And it was formally granting an extension of the preliminary and final major site plan approval for four ninety-five Springfield Avenue. And reaffirming, there were three variances that had been granted with that site plan approval. And the board reaffirmed the three variances that had previously been granted. And no conditions attached, it was just extending the approval that previously granted.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
Can I vote on this even if I wasn't at the meeting?
I know.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the application? Second?
Second. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Maderos?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, applications for review, application number N dash two dash twenty-five, Richard Bauer, one seventy Dogwood Lane and Plymouth Drive, block two six oh five, lot five.
Like a month post in person up tonight. Good evening, everyone. August fifteenth, we're here, attorney for the applicant, Mr. Bauer. I have a couple professionals with us tonight. Mr. Bill Hallows, who's been before you one or two times. And also have Kevin O'Brien as our professional planner. I'd like to start out with Mr. Hallows to let him spawn in so we can kind of walk through the plans a little bit. Identify the subject track.
You probably should tell the future enough about the truth.
I do.
I just stated through the record.
William Hallows?
And Mr. Hallows, can you just briefly go through, you know, obviously your experience before this board and other boards and and obviously that your license is still in good standing.
I have appeared before this board, it's been some time, I've been over at the zoning board quite often lately. I'm a professional engineer, Lance Sebayer, principal of the firm Murphy and Hallows Associates. And Murphy and Hallows Associates is forty-plus years in Sterling. And I.
We're all executives.
Okay.
And your license is still in good standing, right?
It is.
Oh, okay. Alright, Mr. Hallows, you were engaged to perform a minor subdivision plan for this particular parcel. Can you please walk us through the Dogwood Lane, one seventy Dogwood Lane parcel so we can get an understanding of the board of what we're looking at?
Okay, but the subject property is one seventy Dogwood Lane. It is the parcel here, and sheet one in the left-hand corner. North would be the top of the drawing, south would be the bottom of the drawing. It's at the intersection of Dogwood Lane and Plymouth. On the drive, it is known as block twenty-six oh five, is lot five. And it presently contains forty thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet. We're gonna move on to sheet two. Sheet two is, shows you the existing conditions. Presently improved, the house space in Dogwood Lane. Presently improved with a brick. Well, one-story administrative building. The driveway is off of Dogwood Lane, it's a garage under situation. And the lot has forty thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet, which is quite a bit more than the adjoining lots in that area. Basis Dogwood, there are utilities on all the streets, and it's kind of wooded around the property. You've got the intersection of Dogwood and Plymouth, trees, and it goes around the perimeter. And what the applicant would like to do. I think I want to take a step back just so that you have an idea. Since we're talking about the existing lot. In nineteen fifty-two.
And just very quickly, this is not anything we've introduced before, if we can mark this as A one. And Bill, can you tell, identify what this is?
This is a final map recorded in the Union County Register's office. In nineteen fifty-two, it's map. It was due backwards, three sixty-seven D.
Just mark this real quick. Six, five, twenty-one, twenty-five. Okay, what is A one?
A one is a recorded final map. Which actually shows that our subject property was actually two lots back in nineteen, created as two lots back in nineteen fifty-two. Probably the two biggest lots on that block bounded by Plymouth Drive and Dogwood Lane. Because it's just the way the angle of Dogwood was, you got a little bit more length to those lots. I just wanted to let you know, that was nineteen fifty-two, and nineteen fifty-four, I guess is A two. Hopefully this is recorded, and I believe I got it from the engineering department back twenty years ago or so. It's an August nineteen fifty format because Dogwood Lane Development Company, and this is the part where they started to put Lenape Lane together. Extend Dogwood into Lenape, and at that time, they actually had some people's names on the lots. And our two lots were owned by one individual at that time. Let's kind of give you a background of what's transpired with this property over the years. What the applicant would like to do. Is subdivide the property, remove the existing house, remove the existing drive. And then the other improvements that are on there. Does it go out of the property, they think we have?
And which is sheet four?
This would be sheet four. The corner lot would have twenty thousand twenty thousand twenty thousand nine forty square feet, being a corner lot, New York twenty zone would require twenty-two thousand square feet. And that would be a variance that we'll be requesting here tonight. The other variance is in the lot width, because it's a corner lot, it's required to have a hundred and twenty feet. It has a hundred and nineteen point three feet. Meaning it's eight and three eighths of an inch short of at one twenty. The other variance we're requesting as part of this lot would be a setback, front yard setback on Dogwood Lane. You can see that we put a jog in the building at the front of the house, fifty feet is required. We're at forty-six point nine. We have the first jog, we're at forty point three. And we have some steps coming out with a canopy over the steps of the stoop, and that would be at thirty-six point seven. And the garage is at thirty-six point seven.
Mr. Hallows, just on that point alone, can you just please explain to the board why you're getting that differentiation of the setback, what's happening on Dogwood?
Because of the angle of Dogwood, it comes off of Plymouth and has an angle where it comes in on the property. So that's why it's a larger setback at the front of the house, and actually this house went from the drive.
Just one point while we're there, just so I have a better picture in my mind. And I recognize that this doesn't change what we own, but there is a the actual curb line is in a different spot from where our property line is, right?
Correct, correct.
So where's the actual curb line?
It's approximately ten, eleven feet. Additional setback area, so that thirty-six point seven becomes forty-six point seven.
And over here, the forty-six is like fifty-seven. If, just from an appearance perspective, in terms of the actual setback from the road.
Correct.
Got it.
That case of effect, the
Right-of-way has been, yeah, then obviously it's town property, it's not been, you know.
It's definitely bad. Most town, most roads in town have about a ten-foot.
Yeah.
They're all set from the curb line to the right-of-way.
Sure.
And is the code based upon the right-of-way or is it based upon curb?
No, it's based upon our property line.
Yeah, the property line, in this case is the heavy line, if you're looking at the drawings, the heavier line. And then we meet all the other requirements as far as side yard setback, lot coverage. So it's really just, in this instance, it says three items that we're requesting a variance for. Lot area, because it's a corner lot. And lot width, the eight and three eighths inch situation to get to that one twenty-two. And then the side yard setback, and the reason why, one of the reasons why we're seeking that setback variances, we just felt that the house, a house fit better in this configuration than something that if you had a fifty-foot setback on there, the house would be very narrow, and it would probably be deeper than
medication, or Zyrtec and Xyzol respectively, because chronic long-term use of these medications could put you at risk of developing generalized itching after stopping the medications abruptly. This has been studied previously, and I
You should have seen the last one. Yeah, now go there.
Yeah.
That's not anything you want to see, yeah. Someone did last video.
Alright, so what, rather than have a long, narrow house and then really reduce the rear yard area and then impact more trees that are back on that, along that back property line. We thought that this would be a better configuration requesting the variance for the side yard, or actually the front yard, in this case.
And specifically now, the zone, if you can just kind of illustrate where the setback requirement is based upon the building envelope versus what we have, so to show the forty-foot, which is kind of in a box there, right?
Yeah.
Versus the seventy-five.
Yeah, I think we actually have the dash line at thirty-five feet, pardon me. Thirty-five feet.
This one here in the back?
Oh, I'm sorry, this would be the forty-foot rear yard setback.
Right.
Right, it's just below, this is a potential drywall system, and that's just below that drywall.
So that dash line, which is just above the words lot five, would be where we could technically disturb to without requiring an additional variances to shrink and make the house more skinny, is that correct?
Correct.
And then right now, where we're sitting on the existing setback, we're seventy-five, ninety-two feet.
Right, we're seventy-five feet from that rear line to the proposed.
Which is creating a lot of separations, lot four.
Right.
Way more than required.
Which that house is very close to the rear, our rear property, so.
Understood.
We'll go back to the trees for just a second.
Sure.
How many trees would be impacted?
Sixteen trees are impacted with both, with both buildings. And we've required twenty-five replacement trees.
So as would be typical, should this matter move forward at some point in time, you prepare a lot grading plan that'll have all of the requirements to tree replacement, that would go to Mr. Sulfaro as part of the standard review?
Yeah, that's the customer procedure.
With the ordinance, right?
Right, customer procedures, if the board were to prove this, we record the piece, and Mr. Bauer will come in for a building permit, a grading plan, soil erosion plan would have to be prepared for that, a little bit more detail than what you have on the subdivision plan, the site grading, site zoning, soil erosion, settlement control, and stormwater management, and tree replacement and tree removal and replacement also, that's part of that plan.
But by not just clarified it for Ms. Pope's comment, if we kept pushing this down, we're certainly starting to impact more trees towards the rear of the property, right?
Yes.
Of those sixteen trees, large trees, combination?
Most of, most of trees on this property are.
Pretty big, now and then yesterday.
Again, twenty-five is replacement based on the criteria.
Because that's because you showed us that earlier, in nineteen fifty-two, where it was two lots, but it was divided separately, or differently than it is now, so this is, it used to be divided horizontally on the map, did you have of now as opposed to vertically? Did you ever consider, is that, yeah, exactly.
We actually did consider that, what we, what we came to conclusion was we get a little better building envelope on this, we would end up with narrow houses and deeper houses.
Would you have that variant, I'm sorry? Well, I was just gonna say, that's more consistent with the surrounding lots, it seems, they're narrow and long as opposed to well, I guess that's probably the same, but would you still have the same number of variances?
We may end up with another variance. Because the, I'm looking at it, and I think the interior lot would probably not have that required twenty thousand square feet, I mean, I didn't get on to that next lot yet, but lot five point oh one meets all the requirements for twenty thousand square foot lot. It meets lot area, lot width, or lot coverage, I mean, these are conceptual houses.
And but for the corner, this lot exceeds the zone standard as well.
Yes.
By nine hundred and forty, you know, I see whatever.
Nine twenty-two?
Nine twenty-two, yeah. Twenty thousand nine twenty-two, I know you said nine forty, but I think.
It is, it is nine forty, Mr. Sulfaro's survey corrected me.
Okay.
This one gets eighteen square foot more than what's shown on it, and this one gets eighteen square foot less.
Gotcha.
Because this is a parallelogram lot at right time.
So technically, speed on that will be twenty thousand, twenty, square feet, and the other one is the extra.
Yes, it's a forty.
Twenty thousand. But that being said, the lots in and of themselves in terms of the width, because I know Mr. Maderos talked about the width of the lots. But for the corner requirement, they're, well, they only miss it by eight inches on the corner requirement, but they're still as wide as anything that's required by the sub.
Correct.
Will you talk about the lot sizes in the area, or is that?
Mr. O'Brien will be talking about the but
I was just gonna say that, we showed typical drywall system, have every deep reach, each lot. Again, they have, the utilities are on both streets, so it's not like we have to put easements. And I'm showing a suggested site triangle at your corner.
Those dry, the drywall, drywall is, are supposed to be maintained by the homeowner, right? So they have access to it.
So typically, on a resale, and I've done a few minor subdivisions in town over the years, a condition in the deed when the property would be resold, there'd be a condition that indicates that it's the owner, the homeowner, to maintain and deal with the means of that system, it's right in the deed, it's a condition of what Mr. Robertson would make as a criteria of any sort of resolution, and so on the on the second passing of that, it just becomes part of the historical title, so it always passes its way through as a condition. So that people don't have to go look up a resolution for it, that won't be in the deed for them.
You just talked about the site triangle, which, you know, probably impacts another.
But you don't have to necessarily take those trees out, it's low-growing shrubs that you really can't see, see around.
Eventually, if you have a mature tree with a canopy that's twenty feet high, that will not happen.
That would not have come, yeah, but if you put in low-growing shrubs, shrubs, and they went above thirty inches, then you'd, you'd violation.
Yeah, you had a, I'm sorry, you about to ask a question, go ahead.
So no variances are needed for the second?
No, fully conforming. Lot width, lot area, and the coverage shown for this conceptual house that we had there.
And, Mr. Hallows, you had a chance to review Mr. Sulfaro's engineering comments slide from his office.
I had no issues with that letter, we can comply with those things.
And that letter, I think, I don't, I think on May thirteenth, is that the date of the letter?
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, you are correct.
I didn't get it on May thirteenth, did I? You could have. I went to Michael Gormley directly, actually, I thought I saw it on May thirteenth, whatever. But you had a chance to review it, you went along the conditions, and there's no issues that are unacceptable with that letter, right?
No, just the embarrassing part of the eighteen square feet on the lots.
So, which obviously would be corrected as part of any type of final plan and great plan.
That's correct.
Okay, was there any other conditions, elements, components that you want to explain at this point in time regarding any conditions present?
I don't, I don't think so, but I mean, board members have played.
The board have any questions?
I have one quick question, if the house on the lot where you need the variances were to be made smaller, would you still need variances?
We still need a lot area variance, we'd still need a lot with variance, it's really just a setback.
And the setback in and of itself, Mr. Hallows, you know, again, i- if we make it, there's not a coverage issue here, correct? So we can make the house longer and skinnier, it just becomes more like a trailer-ish kind of look, I say, and then it pushes into that rear yard.
Yeah.
You couldn't move that line, the dividing line between the two proposed properties, you couldn't move the line.
You can't move it.
No, because that gives you this specific area here, the hundred foot sets it, and you need the hundred foot more than not having.
Thank you.
That number, so the measurement on the left, on Dogwood Lane of the properties, it's a hundred and seventy-three feet, and then on the opposite lot, it's two hundred feet, or the opposite side is two hundred, and it just, it just seems like that line.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, it's correct, the one seventy-three seventy-nine goes to the tangent of the curve.
Okay, that's what I was saying, okay.
Any questions? Does anybody from the public have any questions from Mr. Hallows? You, please come up, no, please, please come up, yeah, please come up.
That's okay.
Yeah, yeah, state your name.
Nancy Raffelery, I live at twenty-one Plymouth Drive, the house next to, adjacent to this mess he's trying to build in nineteen fifty-four, when there was a possible.
This, right now, you're only allowed questions for the engineer.
Alright, what is the benefit of building two houses on a property that's not meant for two houses, the size he's trying to build?
It's not an engineering question, but you're happy to ask our planner, I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, whatever.
I agree, the planner will, excuse me, go over the lot size and the variances and everything, so it would be most appropriate to answer that question.
So you can't answer my question?
You're gonna come back up, and you did so well, now you're an expert at this.
Now I'm an expert.
You're gonna come back up and talk some time.
What am I allowed to ask?
You are allowed to ask questions of the engineer.
About the house that's going on Plymouth Drive.
The house that's going on.
How many feet is it gonna be from my house on Plymouth Drive?
I was gonna.
Great question. Very well.
We were spit at them.
Well, it's an eighteen-foot side yard setback. So it would be at least eighteen feet from our, I don't know where your house is exactly, but from up to proposed house, or conceptual house, to the property line, it could be as little as twelve, but more likely with this lot.
Which lot is it?
Twenty-one, I have the first house next to the mess.
Do you know what lot number you want? I don't know my address.
It's lot six, I think.
Lot six, yeah, it's a lot six. So. So, Benzel's, and it could be as close as twelve.
Not to your house.
To the side, to the property.
Let me ask you a question, I mean, you show both twelve feet, and now twelve feet is the minimum, and you have twelve or eighteen.
What I did on this, this plan was I just split, I put the house in the middle and then put a middle house in the middle and then went each way, so that it's closer to the eighteen, or maybe a little bit more.
You're talking about which side, this left side here? On the right side, here, twenty-one and nineteen and a half.
Yeah, because it's in between, yeah.
So and I'll just ask this question, because I think I've built a lot of houses and I've done subdivisions myself, when you're laying out these houses, you're trying to take the side doors and create individual consistency between Between the buffer of each house and between the houses that you're building.
Right.
So you sometimes, correct me if I'm wrong, you sometimes put a little extra on the neighboring property and then. Try and find a good middle range. So there's a separation between the two new houses. Is that a pretty fair assessment?
That'd be fair. Sometimes we have some topographical constraints, but that's not the case there.
Because in this instance, you try to give a little extra buffer here and then. Kind of averaged between, but still stood in compliance without requiring any variance. Is that clear? And that's like, I think, would you kind of see if you look at how it tracks, steps up. Obviously, it could be adjusted in a lot of different ways. We could have shifted it to twelve feet on the right side and. Put the eighteen on the left, but then you end up with this wider separation, which would be, I think, if I'm wrong, a better benefit for us. Cause there's more space between the house on that side and we're not taking advantage of the neighbors spacing. Fair to say?
Fair to say.
Okay. Other questions?
I, I just asked, they're willing to, uh, agree as a condition, uh, to maintain that eighteen foot. Minimum eighteen foot setback on, uh, to the neighbor's property.
I'll just step back and the reason why I showed the twelve and eighteen, because Mr. Solvaros. Um, staff requires that I do that. Um, and it. So it sometimes can be a little confusing that has the two lines on there, but, yeah, I, I think in this case, most likely we could. That hold the eighteen as a.
I mean, I didn't quite, I mean, basically what you're saying is just committed that there would be an eighteen foot.
We have no problem. Cause you can comply with that, right, Mr. Hollis?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Stuff. So you have your name, set up your stuff.
State your name and your address, please.
Uh, John Ream, R E A M, uh, twenty-two Plymouth Drive. So I am literally across the street from both the fronts of the houses. I am located right here in this picture. So, and now I know I have to ask him questions, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go that direction. So you, you mentioned nineteen fifty-two and nineteen fifty-four. Um, do you know why he didn't put two houses on, on that property at that time?
No.
Um. Again, about nineteen fifty-two and nineteen fifty-four. Do they have any bearing on the current laws and the zoning rules? Um, today?
I don't think that any of those lots on that, that kind of a square bounded by Plymouth and Dogwood.
Right.
Meet today's day, other than this lot.
Great, thank you. Um, and, and I'd like to repeat, let me ask this question. What benefit do, does the neighborhood gain from breaking these variances and putting two houses where there should be one?
Again, uh, same, uh, before, it's a question, you haven't gotten there yet. The planner's here. You have every right to ask the planner that. That's what he's testifying to. We've already stated that.
Well, he just showed us these.
Talk about anything about that. I haven't been talking about any, about any planning information. He's an engineer.
Okay. Um, can I talk about trees? How many, how many, we talked about how many trees are gonna be.
Talk about trees.
I love trees. I really do love trees. So how many trees are gonna remain that are there now? You've commented that.
I don't know the, the, I, I don't have the total. I really just counted what I thought for getting grading. Um, what would, uh, would be removed.
Okay.
And, um, it was sixteen, you know, it was twenty-five replacement trees.
That's it. So the reason I ask is, is, is about water. Um, we have a, on this map, there's a. He has it showing right here. There is a, a drain right here. Uh, you know, one of the storm drains in town, um. A doctor's drain. I have a, a rate from the mayor for that one. Um, and there's also a drain. Um, across the street in front of Bill's property there. So there's two drains. Problem is, we're on the bottom of a hill. And during those two or three months of the rainstorms that we have every year, a tremendous river of water comes down this road. Plus our driveways, plus our garage. So the question about removing these trees and, um. Where's the water gonna go? Um, you know, it's gonna be more water. I want to just mention the, the coverage. This imper, what's the word for it? Um, imperious coverage, I think is a big thing. And according to this document. It's going from seventeen hundred to eighty-eight hundred, which is like a fivefold increase on coverage. Where's the water gonna go? I'm just very concerned about the water. Can, can you address that at all? Where's the water?
Well, as we indicated before, when we. If this were to be approved by the board and Mr. Bauer goes in for a building permit, we would do a more detailed grading plan. Um, and we would have some stormwater management on site that, uh, with Mr. Solfarro would be reviewing it.
And you require, do you just go over what the requirement is? I mean, you, you cannot allow more water to be.
Yeah, right. Basically, that's, that's what it is. So the drywall system would, or, or some system like that would be designed to take that water into account.
So all the water coming off the roof likely will go into the drywalls, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it would get piped from the roof leaders into the system.
Right. This is a picture of the drywall right there. Yeah, that'll last twenty minutes in a couple of those rainstorms we had last year. There's gonna be more water on our street. No doubt about it. I've lived in this neighborhood for thirty-three years. I know there's gonna be more water in the street. I'm very concerned about the trees and the, the coverage. There's nowhere for water to go.
The standard, if I can jump in, second, it's, it's to mediate a three-in train event. That is the standard. I'm assuming that's what you'll design too.
Correct. Well, those are great and all that, but the reality is, last year alone, we had those two killer storms. River of water down the street. I have rocks from a guy's house up, up four of a mile away in our front yard on the bottom of it. Okay, good. So I'm concerned about water. I'll, I'll mention that later. Can I just ask again, why can't you make this house smaller? If, if you made this house smaller. And, and took care of that setback issue, which is kind of a large variance in setbacks. Would it really look like a trailer if you made it out small?
It would, it would be a long, narrow house. And it would, and it would, it would indicate.
Kind of like the shape of this house, this way. Oh wait, this is, right, what's, how many bedrooms in that house that, that's there now? This is a six-bedroom house, which is ginormous for the neighborhood. That's a five-bedroom house, which is ginormous for the neighborhood.
Objection based upon one information, considering I closed a lot of the houses in the neighborhood.
Aside from the new one next to the house.
Once again, the planner, I mean, we're gonna ask the planner of the lot sizes, the size of houses and everything. So he's most appropriate to answer those questions.
Okay. Uh, that's it. I, I do object and I'll be back.
Okay. I just have a quick question to Mr. Hollis, just in response to this. Mr. Hollis, are we exceeding coverage? In any aspect that requires any variance for building and or other coverage?
No.
Okay. So we can leave it for one.
Completely agree with that. Other questions?
Uh, David Cohen, one eighty-two Dogwood, block twenty-six oh five, lot four. Drainage obviously is our biggest issue. Um. On sheet two of five, Mr. Hollis, you show existing survey conditions, right?
Yeah.
It does not show the swell. And I have a picture if you, if there is a swell behind my house. Um, going right here, I would even propose maintaining that the drywall system. I have, I can print it for the board as an exhibit.
What's that to do with that? We won't, we, we're not looking to disturb anything back there.
Okay, but, but you don't show it and, and is that applicant committed to maintaining that because that's an important drainage system for. For everyone here. Will that be impacted at all by that?
That's, that's what we're saying. We're not looking to impact that at all.
Okay.
We're, we're trying to basically stop that, uh, land disturbance. Rocks, wells, the rear end setbacks.
Now, what, so will there be a commitment that in doing all that, there'll be no disturbance and actually a maintenance of the swell system?
Who maintains the swell?
I think it's, I think it's right, right.
Yeah, we, we're not disturbing back there. We, we face it that way. One, it gives you more of a buffer.
Yeah.
Well, two, we don't have to mess with the swell.
Mr. Bauer, can you please step up? Be responding to a question, place of testimony, and I don't have all order, but the way it's going.
I think, do we really want it have disjointed testimony?
I know, but I.
Why, why, why don't we call?
I can wait. He just said something that wasn't, he wasn't sworn in. I just wanted.
I, I think he'll have an opportunity to, to testify and then say a question. It just becomes too confusing for the record.
I agree.
The other question is on the trees. I assume at this point, there's been no inspection of the trees because, uh, there isn't, there's an ash disease apparently. Um, we had one. That we paid to have chopped up that just fell post our house and are having more have to come down. Is there. Would there be an inspection and removal and replacement of the ash trees under that?
Generally speaking, Mr. Baco would, as, when we submit the, again, if approved by the board, we submit a grading plan. He would be part of that review also along with Mr. Solfarro. And I, I'm sure he would go out there and take a look at it.
And the, where were your drywells discharged to?
For the inlet. In, in each case, there's an inlet that they can discharge to.
Wait, so you're going to?
It's an overflow. It's not a discharge. Okay.
Right. And though, so there'll be no circus. All the leaders will be tied into the driveway?
Yes.
And no runoff? Where, how will the driveway water be captured and the new driveway water?
In this case, we could actually put a, uh, trench drain across the driveway.
How will the drive, if this is the one driveway on, on those lot five. How will you prevent drainage towards the back of the property?
That's how I grade it. You know, whether it's a curve in or that type of thing, direct the water toward that trench drain.
Do the proposed plans, uh, envision Belgium block curving around the property?
I can't speak to that.
I thought that was, I thought that was.
But if we need to, um, it could be part of the grading plan.
Right. I thought that was, used to be, planning board requiring for, when there's subdivisions, but the. Um, and the other, just the other piece on the fifty-two and fifty-four plans. If, if you've done this, testified a while, you've admitted that that was before Dogwood Lane was primarily developed with the existing houses on it. In fact, those houses weren't till nineteen sixty or after. Okay.
Repeat that. I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying. What did you just add?
So on the fifty-two or fifty toward, the Dogwood Lane development wasn't actually, the houses that are there weren't actually, most of them put on till sixty or after.
Okay.
Um, that's it. That was my only questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Okay, well, look, you have any questions?
I'm, uh, Dr. William Petty, and I live across the street, uh, on Plymouth, on the house directly across the street. And, uh, I have objections, which I'll later on say, but my two questions for you, please. One. I mean, I downloaded the responsibilities and the mission statement for the planning board, so I would be familiar with this. And it says that one of the responsibilities is protecting and enhancing the natural environment. You're talking about a project that's gonna take down a significant number of trees. Are you telling me that protects the natural environment, that plan? To build two houses where you could build one, or two houses, do you think in your opinion that protects the natural plane?
And we're gonna replace them with twenty-five.
They're not, these are old growth trees with big root systems. They absorb a lot of water, just as John said, they absorb a lot of water. And these new trees from the nursery, six foot high, they absorb very little. So do you think that follows the mission of the planning to protect the natural environment, this plan?
Again, he's not the planner.
Well, he's the engineer and he's the, he's a person who's speaking to all this stuff, so you can't say he's not a qualified person. I'm not getting in your face. I'm just, yeah. Yeah, he seems like he could speak to that issue.
But I'm making my objection of the record, which I'm entitled to. Mr. Johnson.
You didn't want to answer me that much.
Secondly, is, I live directly across the street and John is right. We have these tremendous, uh, rainstorms in Berkeley Heights. I don't know why we get so unlucky. And we've had a lot of them. You're gonna put in some catch basins here, but you have two driveways. That are not gonna be connected to the catch basin. And they're gonna flow.
So that's not what I said on the last question I got. So we could put a trench drain across the driveway and.
If, from, I have a driveway that slopes down towards my house and it's amazing how much water is captured in one of those driveways. Those two driveways into a street that does not have great drainage in the catch basins there. Are gonna be flowing right out onto the street to add to the already. Volume of water we have coming down the streets during rainstorms. You're the engineer, please speak.
I just told you.
I, you think one of those little catch, uh.
Well, they come in different sizes. They come in six, they come in eight, they come in twelve.
I know that too, but you're confident that those catch basins at the end of a driveway would capture all the water coming down from the driveway?
If you have a cloud verse, no, it's not gonna catch it. But it's gonna catch.
It's gonna.
It's gonna catch probably seventy-five to eighty-five percent of the story.
It's gonna add to your ready existing problem with drainage on that street. And that's why we're so passionate about it.
Right. Mr. Hollis, I have a question for you. Uh, how big of a house can we build on this property without needing a single variance?
A very large house.
If I were to tell you that that house were to be. At eleven thousand five hundred square feet, does that sound accurate?
Uh, sounds accurate.
And if you built eleven thousand five hundred square foot without a single variance, no coverage, no anything. Would you end up taking down as many or more trees?
Probably at least as, at least as what we're saying.
Realistically, the end of the day, with a building permit, with zero review. Go in tomorrow. Take the trees down, build an eleven thousand five hundred square foot house, and there's nothing to talk about, right?
Correct.
Other than a normal grading plan, which we said we're ready to comply with, Mr. Bauer.
Right.
Okay. And what's the total, total two signs? It's, it's under seven thousand, right?
But.
Uh, Michael Gertsmann, forty Plymouth Drive. So I live right next to the Reams. I'm right across from Nancy. Um, could, and we've covered some of this and I just want, the two driveways, where will, where will they be on the plans?
Okay, yeah.
So.
The house on the corner.
Yeah.
We come out the Dogwood. About where the house, where the driveways.
Yeah, okay.
The house on Plymouth, we're showing on, coming on to the westerly side of that property line.
Okay. Uh, question of, so right now there's a storm draining, uh, it's not a big storm drain, but it's a storm drain that slopes inwards. Right, uh, on the property, uh, line. Right, yeah. Is, is that gonna be changed in your plans? So there's, it's still gonna swoop in and you're just gonna, it's gonna go down to that, uh, just storm channel.
Yeah, my, yeah, yeah, that's, that's the answer is correct.
Okay, um, so we talked about the trees. I- is it, we used a number. I, I'm gonna get more, uh, broad, I guess. Are you just gonna clear cut the property? Cause there, so what trees will be saved?
We indicated we didn't really wanna take any trees down in the last forty feet, yes.
In the comments, correct?
In the trees in the, in the front, there's quite a few of those trees that can be saved also.
And the, the largest tree on the property, it's like two hundred and fifty years old or something like that. Um, actually, power lines are connected to it or to stabilization lines. Is that, it's, it's right here in the corner. Will that be saved?
Yeah, we're, we're not looking to go up into that corner.
Okay. Um, and I, I don't know if you can answer this question, um, and maybe it's for somebody else, but if you put an eleven thousand square foot home. On this property, would it sell in our neighborhood?
I don't think it's, not, not necessarily, that's the extension.
Oh, okay. I just, that's what I said. I, I didn't know. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
So we, we have a question about, um, the impact on the schools. We have to go to the school board because they're putting eleven bedrooms in there. So people are gonna have a lot of kids. We already have four kindergarten. Not the right question. Okay, can I have a list of things I can ask? Cause there's probably only two or three, right?
Talked about.
Huh?
Anything he talked about.
Uh, wait, there's a chance for you to make a statement at, at the end. You can make any statement you wanna make. Yes. Now, at the, at the end.
Procedure, we have another witness, yeah, and eventually you'll get a, a statement chance.
So you have that with the engineer? Any other questions for the public?
Uh.
I don't believe so. I think we would probably disturb more to get a rain garden and, um. I think something like a different system. Like a different system than a rain garden would work better.
Well, I agree with the sister, but but an additional protection would be a rain garden if that's if there's room for it, but you're saying there's not.
I think you would disturb what we're trying not to disturb by trying to put a rain cover.
I was thinking about that. That's sort of I'm not sure if it's that much. Wonder that that's where it's won't crawl into flooding in the other sides. That way, that area is there, yeah. Um, doesn't seem to be any trees in that.
Well, that's probably why I'm trying to put the drywall system there or or some sort of system there.
But but Mr. Hollis, is it safe to say if? Is to be approved and move forward, you'll obviously take into consideration doing a combo type or hybrid type system? Relative to both of us.
Yes.
And just again. You know, and I know the audience sometimes isn't familiar with this. I know the board is obviously more familiar with it, but for the edification of the audience. You know, I've been doing development and representing, you know, variety orders and builders for many, many years in town. The process is, yeah, sure. The the process is an exhausting process. It is not something you just wander in and all of a sudden. You know, there there is a lot of back and forth, and Mr. Soffaro does a very, very good job making sure that. Each and every element along with Mr. Baco is adhered to, complies with resolutions and also compliance with zoning, grading and drainage. So it's not just this gets approved and then voila. It's important to understand that obviously Mr. Soffaro has a. Significant amount of control and oversight. Uh, in the process, and I think what. Mr. Soffaro and Mr. Hollis are indicating is that they've worked on many projects in the past and certainly. We've indicated we can comply with Mr. Soffaro's requirements, right, Mr.?
That's right. We will. We will. Okay.
Um, okay. We have our planner. Have it over here.
Change the furniture for a second.
Sure.
When I put this over here, it's named by its wife.
Deal first.
The building, that's. Yeah. Beautiful card. Do you need him or someone?
Good evening.
Could you raise your hand?
I certainly can.
Do you promise to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name and your credentials?
My name is Kevin O'Prime. I am a professional planner. I've been licensed over thirty years. I've been a planner for forty years. Um, I have not been here in Berkeley Heights since before COVID. Uh, however, in the course of my career, I have been here over the years. I have a graduate degree from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm a former board member, uh, planning board and zoning board, as well as redevelopment. Uh, former zoning officer in three towns. I'm published. I have teaching experience at Rutgers as an adjunct in zoning and planning. I worked in about two dozen municipalities over my career. I've appeared before over two hundred and seventy five boards and fourteen of our twenty one counties. I can list them if you like. I don't want to embarrass anybody. Thank you very much, Charlie.
And Mr. O'Brien, your license is kind?
It certainly is, and there are no actions against it.
Mr. O'Brien, you were engaged. You were engaged to provide, um. Planning testimony and review of this particular project. And you, um, talk about.
Yes. The application is for a subdivision of an existing double lot. The applicant is proposing subdividing the lot along Plymouth Drive to accommodate two homes. The existing home will be raised and two new homes will be erected. And there's a very interesting. History to this property. Uh, Mr. Hollis has shown you that the existing forty thousand nine hundred and sixty square foot lot. Was originally two lots in nineteen fifty two. On the subdivision map and again in nineteen fifty four on the subdivision map. Uh, those two, those maps, one map of those was perfected at the county. So it is a subdivision of record. Mr. Bauer. Purchased the property in two thousand and four as one lot. However, his survey, uh, from the prior owner in nineteen ninety eight. Why have that or do you?
I'll show that to the board.
No, no, that's.
I.
And I'm back in the board?
No, 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 it's not. Thank you.
So we're gonna mark this a three.
Very good. Uh. Mr. Bauer provided to me a copy of a survey. In nineteen ninety eight, a little beaten up.
Dogwood, is that correct?
I. The gray were big. Thank you so much. And the title underneath lists this as lots fifteen and sixteen. And it is dated the twentieth of July nineteen ninety eight. And what I'm gonna pass this around, but what it does show. In accordance with Mr. Hollow's original. Math. Are. Are the two. Not away here. Are the two. Subdivided properties. In accordance with the nineteen fifty two and nineteen fifty four subdivision. So that's Mr. Hollow's exhibit, which is connected. Uh, what I'm about to provide you is the survey. From nineteen ninety eight. And this shows the same subdivision line. Going vertically across the horizontally rather. In this rendering. Across the property in accordance with. The nineteen fifty two and nineteen fifty four maps. Start over here. You guys want. What's interesting about this is that. This is nineteen ninety eight. There were still two lots. It was listed as lot fifteen and sixteen in nineteen ninety eight. So for forty, almost fifty years. That property was two lots. In nineteen fifty four, according to our tax records, your tax records, county's tax records. A home was built on this lot. Excuse me, on the two lots fifteen and sixteen. Houses built in nineteen fifty four, according to the county records. That home existed. Shown in the nineteen ninety eight survey in two thousand and four, Mr. Bauer bought it. And in two thousand and four, when he bought it. It was listed as one lot. Somehow it merged. From fifth lots fifteen and sixteen. To lot five. Between nineteen ninety eight. And two thousand and four. Kind of lean towards your professionals and anybody with knowledge on the board. How did it merge? I don't know. Do any of you guys have an idea, any knowledge from back then? No, okay. I'm gonna get I'm gonna take a guess. Uh, for your consideration, and and this is pure conjecture. Because the lot numbers changed. I'm going to guess that between nineteen ninety eight and two thousand and four. The township. Did new tax maps. And when the two net tax maps were done. When the new tax maps were done, excuse me. In accordance with the rules that existed sometime between ninety eight and oh four. These two lots may have been merged at that time. Based upon the new zoning ordinance. Because the new zoning ordinance. In effect now. Is our twenty year. But all of the lots on Dogwood. Are plus or minus fifteen thousand square feet with hundred foot frontages. All of them. Take a look. You you've got the site plan in front of you. Take a look at them. So we're here this evening because we're requesting three bulk variances. Uh, the first one is the minimum lot area for corner lot. Twenty two thousand are required. As opposed to twenty thousand for the interior. An applicant is short a thousand seventy eight square feet or point zero four nine. Uh, this is the minimus, a very minor exception to the ordinance. It does come about, uh, this request for this or this variance because. The applicant is proposing two homes here. If the applicant stay with one home. On the large lot, there'd be no need for this variance. We're also looking for a minimum lot frontage where a hundred and twenty feet are required. And we're providing a hundred and nineteen point three. We are short. Point seven feet or. Eight inches. Over a hundred and twenty. Foot long. Line. This is also the minimus or a very small exception to the ordinance. Now, this or this variance is also required because of the subdivision. So these two variants requested because we're looking to subdivide the law. The front yard setback for the Dogwood Lane House. Fifty feet are required under the. Ordinance, the R twenty ordinance that came into effect between sometime before two thousand and four. Thirty six, uh, thirty six point seven is proposed. As you can see from your site plan, that's only the southerly portion of the house. Dogwood Lane is a right is diagonal. You can see from the site plan, which you also have. Dogwood Lane. Is not squared with Plymouth Drive. All of the homes along Dogwood Lane. Are scooted. To the street. And you can see that on your site plan. Everyone is screwed. Why? Because Dogwood Lane goes sideways. This house is proposed. To be scooted. So at its northern end. This house is proposed to be forty six point nine feet. At its southern end, it's proposed to be. Thirty six point seven. Now, if you take that as an average, if you take an average from that, we're talking about forty three feet where fifty feet is required. And again, these are the new standards. Not the standards under which this neighborhood was built. In nineteen fifty two, nineteen fifty four, we know this house was built in nineteen fifty. There are a number of unique aspects to this application. Every single lot. On block twenty six oh five.
Here's the subject property.
So the record is clear, you're referring to sheet one of the Murphy and Hollow's subdivision plan, correct?
Thank you, Councilor. Is this a one or this is already submitted?
Already submitted.
Already submitted. Thank you very much.
So this is at the top left of the block. All these other lots. Which is. One, two, three, four and six. Are all undersized in the R twenty zone. Take a look at other buildings and lots in the neighborhood. And now you extend that out. Excuse me. Thirty two, thirty one, thirty. Thirty six, thirty nine and forty. Which is on block. Twenty six oh four. So when this neighborhood was subdivided. Nineteen fifty two, nineteen fifty four, and then built subsequent to it. And we know there were buildings here in nineteen fifty four because this house was here. These lots. Were undersized. According to today's standards. Those standards in effect then. Which are the ones that govern this neighborhood. Had fifteen thousand square foot lots. Pattern of development in nineteen fifty two. Was fifteen thousand square feet. Excuse me. Regardless of whether they were interior or exterior. Take a look, for instance. At lot four. Corner. Lot two, corner, lot one, corner, lot thirty one, corner, lot thirty nine, corner. They're all the same size as every other lot in the neighborhood. Those were the standards of nineteen fifty two. That's when the neighborhood was established. Terms of lot width, same thing. Nineteen fifty two, nineteen fifty four, all of these lots were established with roughly hundred foot lot frontages. There are also a number of front yard setback exceptions in the neighborhood. So block twenty six oh four, lot thirty nine. On the other side of Plymouth. From the subject property. Has a variance. For front yard setback. Lot four on twenty six oh five. Over here underneath. Also has a front yard setback variance. Uh, one is for, um, forty feet. And the other is also for forty feet. Pretty much, uh, actually a little bit less than our average. I think where I'm going with this is that the. Existing pattern of development. Is in keeping with the nineteen fifty two, nineteen fifty four plans. The fact that this property was subdivided. Until sometime between nineteen ninety eight and two thousand and four, which we have factual evidence for. Shows that that was the pattern of development. Uh, Mr. Hollis pointed out that, uh, in the nineteen fifty four map. The same last name, think a name, whatever it may be, was assigned to these two lots. Names are assigned to the other lots in the area. As part of that original development. Same name was on these two lots. So did that person buy the two lots in nineteen fifty two, nineteen fifty four, and nineteen fifty four just? Built a big old house on a big old lot for that neighborhood? In the in the depths of time. But that's the pattern of existing development. When one looks to develop a neighborhood. One is looking to meet existing neighborhood character. And in this case, we are meeting the existing neighborhood character as established. But we are being forced to deal with rules. That were put in. Well, after this neighborhood was established sometime between nineteen ninety eight, two thousand and four. Perhaps when that that's when the zoning ordinance was rewritten, perhaps. Don't know. Doesn't seem as though any of us know in this room. But until nineteen ninety eight, this was a two lot subdivision. So we're looking to maintain the existing pattern of development. We're looking to continue the existing buffer. Uh, you've heard from Mr. Hollis. At the existing trees. That are alongside lot six, alongside lot four, uh, lot six over to the east. Lot four to the south. Will be. Unchanged in every way. No development is going there whatsoever. Whatever is there will continue to be there. Not affecting it in any way. Uh. Mr. Centauri and Mr. Hollis did point out. That an extremely large home here could be built. By right. Excuse me. So by right means. Anyone who owns this property. Could walk up to the building department tomorrow morning. And say, I've got an almost twenty one thousand square foot lot. And by right.
Just correction, sir.
Thank you. I'm I'm subdividing in my mind. Correct. Thank you very much. Forty one thousand square feet. And could build as the calculations have shown. Somewhere around a six thousand square foot house by right. Uh, I think Mr. Hollis is being very. A very precise engineer when.
Yes, six thousand square foot. You just mean the box.
The box. That's correct. Two, two floors, yeah. Eleven, twelve thousand square feet house, plus the basement. Yes, ma'am.
I'm seeing on this original map that the dividing line between the two properties go this way.
Correct, it's.
Proposing it to go this way.
That is correct.
If you wanted to have two lots, the way they were supposed to be, why wouldn't you have done the line the same way?
I would say that Mr. Hall is answering the question. If they did actually trigger more variances.
We believe that it would trigger more variances. We believe it would remove more trees. Uh, we believe that it would result in. A less conforming configuration and that would have a greater impact on the neighborhood. If you take a look.
Just wanted to confirm. I had I did hear him say that, but until I saw it on here, I'm a very visual person, so I didn't really.
I believe.
What he was saying.
I believe Ms. Page, Ms. Posh.
Poe runs the vote. Everybody gets it wrong. Don't worry about it.
Own magazine too.
Yes, yeah.
So if you take a look at the existing homes, which are also on your site plan, I'm referring again to. Sheet A one of Mr. Hall's plan, every house. Faces the street. Lot four, which is immediately to our south in another corner lot, does not face Dogwood, but instead faces. I'm sorry, faces the south side of Dogwood. All the others face directly out to the street, including including this corner one, including that corner. And including this one. So by putting two houses here. I I think it would be out of character. I think you're more in character by going like this so that this house, the interior lot. Is going to be conforming to every house that's on Plymouth.
Maybe you just answered your own question why they never built two houses there. You were asking like, why would they have done two houses? Maybe it's because it it wouldn't have looked right on those two different lots.
And and with all. Just for consideration. Um, thinking back to nineteen fifty two, nineteen fifty four. Very few zoning ordinances. Um, master planning was still coming in in New Jersey. Um, there's very few that date back before the second board. Did people really care what they thought it would look like in the neighborhood? I'm just throwing that out for consideration.
Did. I just want to say, I think sometimes ordinances do change with the times.
Absolutely.
We are not in nineteen fifty two, nineteen fifty four, maybe in nineteen ninety eight, things did change. For a reason. I'm just saying, we we will never know the answer to why. They never put two properties or two houses or or like two lots became one. So I that's just my my comment on that.
Sure. And in nineteen fifty four, the original builder said, I want a bigger house on a bigger lot unlike every other. Lot and every other house in the neighborhood.
We like the natural beauty.
It's a beautiful thing. Well, if you've got the ability, it's wonderful. However, in terms of your comment about current. Regulation. When you put new regulation on an existing neighborhood. You make the neighborhood nonconforming. One of the goals of zoning is to make as many properties as conforming as possible. The rezoning and the master planning I've done have all been looking at each neighborhood as it is and making those properties as conforming as possible. Cause every time. Every single time, any of these properties belong to Dogwood, okay? These undersized lots. Undersized lot frontages, they're not conforming lots. They want to put up a screen house, gotta come to the board. Put a porch on, gotta come to the board. Span the living room, put on a kid's bedroom, gotta come to the board. Where I work. The towns I worked in have said, that makes no sense. Why do we want to put a homeowner through that time and expense and rigmarole? You do it for a new neighborhood, by all means. When you're planning a new neighborhood and you've got new regulations and you've got new homes, they have to conform to a new standard. And that makes perfect sense. But to apply it retroactively to an existing neighborhood. Makes that neighborhood nonconforming and all it does is give homeowners a colossal pain in the tuchus. And I've got to walk homeowners through this process and I have for many, many years. As a zoning officer, as a board member, working for towns and on this side. And it just doesn't make sense. And the homeowners say, you mean because they changed the rule? My house hasn't changed. My property hasn't changed. The neighborhood hasn't changed. Now I gotta go through this. And I try to explain it as you've now entered the alternate world of zoning and planning. Where you don't know anything because we're in our own little world here. We've got our own language. We've got our rules. And the homeowners have no idea. People buy a home and do they know what zone they're in? No. Do they know that across the street, that huge wooded expanse? Is not publicly owned, it's privately owned? No. People don't pay attention to these things until they are caught up in that mall. They're trapped. So if I may, Ms. Pope, why would we want to put homeowners through that?
So I was built in fifty seven and I wanted to make a driveway and a half. I had to come before the board and we did. I didn't need a variance to do it. So I think making conforming properties. Without a variance, absolutely want to try to conform as many properties as possible. But if you need. Variance, like I feel like we're opening a bucket of forms. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, that's a comment, ma'am. Do you have a question that I can answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I did. I asked the question about the line.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I think that. Sorry, I inherited my wife's allergy somehow. If you stay with the original lot split, which was where you were going originally. Uh, a lot more trees would be removed. I don't know how many, but the building envelope would be different because it would be lengthwise. More trees would have to be removed. To. Put the house, put a house. Down here against lot four. Would quite possibly, don't know, we haven't done the engineering, but quite possibly, just looking at the plans. Impact the existing buffer and the existing swell here. And not have that large area that's currently existing. Whereas by engineering them this way. We leave that whole back untouched. This neighborhood is fairly level with a tendency to go towards the south. By adding stormwater, which doesn't exist now on any of these properties. By adding stormwater, we're actually taking water away from the neighbors. So it will not be going overland. We're requesting a C one and a C and two C two variances. The C one, uh, and there. You've heard this over the many years about the types of variances that there are. Uh, C variances are are bulk variances as opposed to the Ds. Or use variances typically heard by the zoning board, always heard by the zoning board, excuse me. And the first kind of a C variance is based on a hardship. Which is based on size, shape, the narrowness, the shallowness of a piece of land. And a C two or flexible C as it's called, is based on the purposes of the land use law. As well as showing that the benefits of granting the variance have substantially outweighing the detriment. We also have to show you the negative criteria. And I think that's where many of the neighbors were headed. Negative criteria, how this is going to impact the neighborhood. The area as well as the township. So let's start talking about proofs. The master plan does address this general concept in a number of ways, adopted in April of twenty twenty two. Volume two, goals and objectives. Goal number one, promote smart growth and encourage development patterns that complement. The existing character of the township. Property was subdivided. We're looking to keep it subdivided. Albeit in a different way, but that is complementing the existing character.
Just to. Kind of elucidate that for a moment. Uh, when we talk about character conformity consistency. We talk about building a larger house versus houses that are in a particular size or pattern. Would you say it's more consistent? Okay, uh, but character of the neighborhood would be two homes in the range size that we're building versus one extremely large homes that. We we, in other words, the pattern that we're doing is more consistent, the pattern of the neighborhood, the pattern of the variant.
The existing home is large for the neighborhood. But it's certainly not large in proportion to the law. And in proportion to the other homes in the neighborhood. So back in nineteen fifty four, whoever the builder was, didn't build what for them would have been a monster home, built a home. Looking again at sheet A one. A home that is proportionate to the other buildings on the lots on Dogwood. We're proposing similar homes that are also proportionate. To those lots and in fact are conforming to every setback in every way. Conforming to every coverage requirement in every way.
With the exception for the.
No, no coverage. We 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 have every coverage.
Setback. No exceptions that is the double front.
With the subdivision, yes, but currently no. Apparently it conforms. So if you were to come in, as we talked about earlier. Builder Harriet, I want to come in. I want to put up that twelve thousand or so square foot house. I can do that. Would that be in character with the neighborhood, as Mr. Centauri is asking? As a planner, I would say no. But I also ask you, look at the site plan. A house double this size. On this size lot compared to these other houses which are shown on sheet A one. You tell me. You're the residents here. That's why you are the decision makers here. Cause you know the neighborhood, you know the town. Is that what you think should be seen here? And yet somebody could walk in tomorrow and just do it. No review, no engineering, no planning, no nothing. They can take down X number of trees, replace them. They can build to the full maximum lot coverage and building coverage and side yards. With no review whatsoever. No promises. No promises like you're hearing this evening. We'll keep the buffer. We'll keep the sail swell. We'll keep a minimum of eighteen feet to the adjoining neighborhood. No, you don't get any of that. Certainly.
Are you submitting that that's Plan B?
No.
Okay.
No, we're talking conjecturally. Cause when the the question is. The character of the neighborhood. What would be in character? And my testimony is that. The proposed subdivision of front yard with the two homes is conforming to this neighborhood as it exists. But to come in with a conforming home would certainly be out of character. Now, in that neighborhood, there are other developments going on. And I think you take a look at some of them, which I. I don't know whether they're thereby right or whether they are courtesy of a board. But some of the newer developments certainly looks out of place in that neighborhood. But that's my passing view. So you may want to consider that in the course of your deliberations. Other parts of the master plan do say protect and enhance the character of existing neighborhoods, particularly single family residential neighborhoods. Which I believe this does. Action number one talks about eliminating unnecessary barriers for home improvement. I think that speaks towards imposing ordinance requirements after. A neighborhood has been built. Objective number two. I'm sorry, action number two talks about encouraging consistency and visual character within residential neighborhoods. And I I think that speaks to your question. In terms of visual character, what fits the neighborhood? Double the size house or one that is more in keeping with the existing scale of development? I was referring to A one for Councilor. Thank you. Objective four also talks about. Controlling development patterns. Based on the capacity of community facilities and services. We're using existing community services here. This is the existing pattern of development. We're using existing sewer, not putting anything else in here. So certainly meets that goal. Among the proofs are to show that this application does meet the purposes of the municipal land use law. I believe it does meet a number of goals, including A for alpha. Encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state. In a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And this does that by providing a conforming. Development application, which is going to provide two brand new code compliant. Stormwater providing homes. Which don't exist currently. This is nineteen fifty four. I grew up in a nineteen fifty house and. I've seen newer houses and wow, big differences. All the safety codes. Item B, Bravo, secure safety from fire and other disasters. Talk about the new safety codes in effect and how they protect homes. C, provide adequate light, air, and open space. We are well within the setback and coverage limits. So we are providing those. G, provide appropriate space, sufficient space in appropriate locations for residential needs. I promote a desirable visual environment. I'm sure you've seen the uh architectures that have come in front of you. What's being proposed is in character with the neighborhood. There's nothing unusual here. And M, encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land貌. I believe that this application does support those goals and meets the positive criteria. Terms of the negative impact. I heard the concerns of of many of the neighbors. And I'd like to point out that when. An application comes before you. The way that you judge it is based upon what conforms. Does it conform? This application does, except for three, what I consider very va- very minor variances. Two of which are caused by the subdivision. If this property remained subdivided from nineteen fifty four as it was through at least nineteen ninety eight. Both of those lots are sub were nonconforming. We're now providing. One completely conforming R twenty lot, which does not exist on this street, can't refer to A one. These are fifteen thousand square foot lots, all in this neighborhood. We're now providing a twenty thousand square foot lot over here. And an almost twenty two thousand square foot lot on the corner. Essentially, except for that, we're conforming. So when you're making your judgment, your judgment number one is, okay, what conforms to this zone? And then what impact does this application have upon that layer of conformity? What the neighbors, I believe, are talking about is no build. And I don't blame them. We all like our neighborhoods. But you're talking about a no build scenario. And that's not your judgment. You can't say, you cannot say, I like no build better. Well, that's not possible. Cause somebody, anybody has the right to come before this township and put in a development application. And if it conforms, it has to be granted. So your judgment is against what conforms. And we meet and exceed all those standards. Except for the R twenty standards on the subdivision. So I would submit to the board, that is part of your consideration. You consider what conforms, what's proposed and doing nothing. But doing nothing is not a choice. It appears as though there are a number of comments that have been expressed and may be coming that no development is preferred. That's not your option. That's not part of what you're judging tonight. You're judging what is allowed versus what is proposed. So in terms of negative impacts, I believe this application will be a positive. And that this is going to maintain the current character of the neighborhood and the current pattern of development. And indeed, the pattern of development existed until at least nineteen ninety-eight. There will, of course, be substantial economic, positive impact in construction from new residents. We're all aware of the extreme housing shortage in New Jersey. Providing a modern up to current code homes, two homes to replace a seventy plus year old home on an oversized lot. I think it's going to be a plus on the housing market. Is there a market for both types of homes? Absolutely. Just look around this town, see how many huge homes are being built. Is it easier to sell two smaller ones? Depends upon the market, but there's a market for both of them. And that's not this board's decision. This board's decision is whether or not you can grant these variances. It's up to the builder to decide whether they are willing to take the risk and build whatever has been approved and sell. If they choose to do so or live there, whatever they'd like to do. But whether it can or cannot be sold, I think your general knowledge or the market today shows that just about anything could be sold anywhere today. So that's not a question for the board. Certainly a worry for a neighbor, what's going to happen to these properties? I understand that. But you're talking about planning considerations now. What's the criteria by which you make your decision? Marketability is not one of them. So we've talked about how this is going to be a positive in stormwater. Stormwater is being added. None exists today on any of these properties. Trees will be maintained. Sixteen will be removed, twenty-five have to be put in. A different development or a larger development will remove more trees. In terms of schools, I, I heard that comment made, question made earlier. When a master plan is written, as yours was rewritten in twenty twenty-two. Zones are made. A list of zoning regulations is issued. Those zoning regulations assume on the part of the township that development will occur according to those regulations. So if these are conforming lots, and we've shown without the subdivision, it's conforming, except for the front yard. Sideways dogwood. That the zoning ordinance is already taken into account. That development. Will they have children? None of us know, because how many kids could be in the existing house? There's no limit to the number of children you can put in any house. There's no limit to the number of people you can put into a house, provided you meet your safety codes. And that's up to the township. You could have a couple of families living under the same roof in a single family home. You could, I mean, you all know this. And each one could have how many children? Would that impact the schools? Of course. Does it conform? Yes. So it's not your consideration. Two houses, will that have more kids than one house? Maybe. I am in an older neighborhood in an older town. A lot of my house, a lot of the houses in my neighborhood don't have any kids. And I go to newer parts of town and there's a swarm of kids. I mean, you know, you all know the cycle of development. So it's for schoolchildren, as long as the master plan has anticipated that development. As long as the zoning ordinance allows it, the township is already taken into consideration that there will be schoolchildren. It's part of their planning. That's not for this board to consider. Cause it's already been done. So I believe we meet the burden of proof for the three bulk variances. There are a number of unique aspects is called out in the municipal land use law. The application meets the positive criteria by conforming the goals A, B, C, G, I and M of the municipal land use law. The application can be reconciled with the master plan in a number of places and the master plan dates to twenty twenty-two. It is recent. The application has met the negative criteria. I don't see negative impacts based upon this development when weighing a conforming application to this application. In fact, this application compared to conforming application. We believe has less impact. It's going to be a positive in maintaining the current character of the neighborhood. As well as dating back to the subdivision that existed through at least nineteen ninety-eight. Size of the house, the size of the neighboring house, the size of the neighboring lots. All are, all are very much in current together. Now, I believe that this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And without substantial impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Mr. Suntory, do you have any other questions?
Do you guys first?
Yes.
Would you agree that the irregular shaped lot is contributing to the variance along the dogwood side as it pertains to the double front setback?
It does, and that's why I cited C1 as a hardship because it's based upon the irregularity of the lot, in fact, that the lot was scoot, so black, not straight. So I believe that that is a major contributor, yes.
Now, specifically, we, we have a identification, what I call this A4. Five twenty-one, twenty-five. Can you just testify as to what this represents in terms of lot sizes or specific things?
Certainly. Uh, do we know the date on this map? Is that the current tax map that's on the website? Okay, anyway, I'll get out my current computer text. Too many pieces of paper, everybody.
Why don't we take a five minute break?
Sure. Certainly, and then I'll finish the question, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Just started to get it.
This is your exhibit. This is your exhibit, right?
Friday and next week, all through the season. Wow.
Standing as A4.
All right, let's jump, let's jump back. It's getting late, guys.
Just, uh, actually this one. Wait for the chairman. Chairman's.
So, Mr. O'Briens, you've been referring to the neighborhood, these substandard lots, and you just keep saying the neighborhood, the neighborhood. Can you show us some of the ones that are immediate area on this exhibit and what this represents?
Certainly.
For some visual reference?
Uh, I have the current tax map as shown on the township website. Um, your engineer has informed you that there is a revised set that's gone to treasury and we all know what happens to stuff that goes to treasury. Well, we don't know what happens, actually. But on the other hand, having been in municipal government all my life, I prefer to rely on the town. So here's the current tax map, uh, which we've drawn up. Uh, Mr. Suntory is labeled at A4, May twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. And what we're showing, uh, in the highlighted orange is property in question. And the hash marked lots are non-conforming in accordance with the R twenty ordinance.
Non-conforming in what, in what respect?
In size.
Lot area?
Lot area as well as frontage. Whether they are non-conforming in terms of the bulks, we don't know. The, the house standards, we don't know. But they're not conforming as lots. So this is the exhibit. The highlighted is the property in question, hash marks show the non-conforming lots.
But specifically lot, lot area, correct?
Lot area, lot frontage. I'm sorry.
I was just going to pass it to the board.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so I think, um, John, we're being at this point, Mr. O'Brien?
If we have, Ms. Suntory, you're the pitcher, quarterback?
Questions?
Questions?
Certainly. Chairman?
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if I should ask you or the engineer this, but.
I prefer the engineer, fine.
In, uh, page four of that document.
Site plan?
Trees that I believe.
I'm going to ask Mr. Hollis to join me in case who knows more than I do, and we'll sort it out, Mr. Hollis.
Your question, sir?
Yes.
They're going to be impacted by that structure, the structure on the right hand side, lot, lot two, I guess.
Five one oh one, that's the interior lot.
Interior lot. So if, if you were to move that structure back a little bit further into the property and put the garage on the other side of the house, you would damage fewer trees, you would impact fewer trees. Is there a reason why we couldn't do that?
We could look into it.
What's the question? Is that?
Put the garage and push this back just a little bit, trying to save these couple of trees.
Essentially what you'd be doing is taking advantage of the footprint that exists today, which is a structure that obviously there's no trees there. And you could actually move it a little bit to the left and toward the other structure, because you have seventeen feet of, of setback. Take it down to twelve. It's a new structure.
I really wouldn't want to put on the exact number like that.
Maybe something in between.
Flexibility there.
Yeah, at least try to stay like that thirty.
It's, it's combination thirty, so it can be twelve and eighteen, sixteen and fourteen.
In the right there, yeah.
And that would hopefully mitigate some of the concerns about water absorption at a large tree like that.
Any other questions for?
I mean, on any of the earth maps from fifty-two or fifty-four. Do they, do they designate this as an R fifteen zone?
No.
But you could almost surmise that, or there wasn't really zoning like there is today back then.
In general, there was none zoning as we know it today. There are towns, New York City, for instance, had the first zoning ordinance in America in nineteen sixteen. And again, there are a couple of million people then were more developed than Berkeley Heights was. Um, when did Berkeley Heights come in? I don't know. Any of your professionals recall? I'm sure it's in the master plan. I don't remember.
Let's hope this wasn't.
That's correct.
And then when ultimately it was.
If we had done, um, record searches of the borough archives, township archives dating back perhaps, but we didn't, we didn't anticipate that. But it is the pattern of development is fifteen thousand square feet.
Look at the physical size of home. Basically, you know, the two homes that you're proposing. How long that did.
There are certainly more conforming to the neighborhood and to the existing homes. Uh, this home, the current home is it's an odd configuration. Semi-H, whereas all of the other homes are more block like. Um, these two homes would be more regular in shape, rectangular, more fitting to the outline of the property. The two new homes, yes, Chairman. Yes.
Majority of the homes in the neighborhood, two stories?
They, they go between one and two. And there are twos, there are ones, nothing out of the ordinary.
Is it fair to say, Mr. O'Brien, that, you know, in your experience in terms of, you know, in years of government, the current development patterns in not just this town, but in many towns, you're seeing a lot of two-story structures, they've dropped into the ranches or caves are raised. Nearly consistent with redevelopment. The homes are getting larger. Is that fair to say?
It's a general statement. I don't disagree. And it all depends on where you are. Uh, my wife's family comes from near Glassboro, South Jersey. Once you get below Trenton, everything's a rancher.
But in this town.
But in this town, that specifies, thank you. No, I, I, it's rare to see them. They are here. It's a good number here. But what conforms, what can they build? What can they build by right? They can build two stories. Not a problem. And so if I chooses to do one, fine, choose to do two, same thing.
Any other questions in the board? Got it. Questions from the public?
Questions will be based on my testimony, Chairman.
Yes, I think it will be based on your testimony and after this, everyone will have an opportunity to say what they want about the application. Introduce myself again.
Where is the place, best place for me to stand? So I'm not nearby.
Right over by your computer, right?
Okay.
They're on the payroll, so they don't care. John Ream, twenty-two Plymouth Drive. I live right across the street. You want to show us where you live, sir, so everybody knows? I'm in this lot right here. Thirty-seven, uh, thirty, thirty-eight, I don't know, thirty-seven. My lot is a hundred feet and it goes back four hundred feet. So I have almost forty thousand square feet, uh, which was totally conforming and to ordinance back when it was built. Anyway, I want to ask about the water, if I may. Do you recall saying that the neighborhood did not have a stormwater problem?
No, I never said that, sir.
You never said that?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I would wait if you want to check the record.
No, I told you. Okay, so, um, do you recall saying that the proposal of the two homes would actually reduce the water problem in the neighborhood?
No, sir. Didn't say that either. I'll wait for you to check the record as well, given.
Okay. Is it your belief that the two houses would reduce the water problem in the neighborhood?
No, sir.
They, no, they won't reduce the problem or?
My answer is no, sir. I do not believe that.
Good. Do you recall saying that someone said no build was the objective of the neighborhood?
Sir, you're striking out so far.
No, no, you definitely said, someone in the neighborhood said no build was our objective.
Not what I said, sir.
Okay, good. Um.
If you ever met, you'd be in last place.
Are, are they all like this?
No, sir, they're not.
No, I see that, um, about the eleven thousand foot square house, um, would it surprise you to know that most of the neighbors would be okay with that?
Good, because you have no choice. You have no choice whatsoever, none. If it's conforming.
Can I, can I propose that as a final question?
Thank, can I finish them?
Yeah.
I'll tell you, you got it, sir.
No, no, you're, 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 you're a guy with the words, I, I get it, um.
Oh, yes.
You said to the board on numerous occasions, do you recall saying to the board on numerous occasions, um, it's not your consideration?
I may have used that phrase in a number of different ways, but not by itself, no.
Just as to what, not, not your consideration, just specific question. Okay, as a question, is it your normal procedure to tell the board with cases such as this how to do their job?
Absolutely, it's my job. My job is to interpret the municipal land use law and lay out the case so the board can make a decision based upon the proofs in the municipal land use law, it is my job, that's what I do.
Right.
I, I beg anybody to correct me if I'm wrong.
And you, you talked about the conforming of the properties, um, and, and how this would conform to these properties that were built, all of them built fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, which were totally at the time.
I didn't say that, sir.
I thought you said that your property, your, your two properties would be conforming to the, the nature of the neighborhood.
The nature of the neighborhood is a different statement than what we just said, which was built nineteen fifty-two, nineteen fifty-four, I did not say that, sir.
Remember saying forced to deal with the rules?
In what context, sir?
Well, uh, current ordinances compared to the other neighbors and your desire to split the, split the property.
And what's your question, sir?
Is it okay to break the rules that are an ordinance? To split a property like this, is it, is it okay to do a double setback? Just because you, you have a double setback on that house.
I, you define that or?
Uh, you have thirty-six feet here and forty-six feet there, I think you recall double setback along.
Okay.
Right?
Others call quarter lots.
Okay.
And front yards, but.
Sure.
And the question is?
Is it, is it common in your experience, since you've been in so many towns for thirty years, to, to just a, as you put it, forced to deal with the laws and, and, and do stuff like that, to make a project uh, not conforming to the current, on the current ordinance? Is that, is it something you do, is that something that's normal in a town like this, is that something that's normal in a neighborhood, should I, should I just accept that? As, okay, we'll break the order.
Different questions here, so accept what, sir?
Okay, I'll just take that as a, as a.
No, I'm not taking anything as a no, because I did not use.
No, I said non-answer, non-answer.
Uh, it's not a non-answer, I'm trying to answer your question, we threw us three questions there.
Let me just, let me jump in.
Thank you, chairman.
Um, generally, anytime a subdivision requires a variance, um, you know, we have to vote on it. And, you know, some we approve, some we don't approve. Uh, you know, generally, if they came in with a fifty-foot block width, that would have been, they probably would leave it in front of the board right now. You know, the fact that, you know, there are three, one of which is by eight inches, you know, it's a tough pull, you know, so you know, but there are variances that are often approved as part of the law. Not all the time, you know, but, you know, so to answer your question is, yes, it's typical, but it's not ninety percent or ten percent, it's, you know, somewhere between.
One last question?
Sure.
I tried to ask this question before, and I think they told me to ask later. If, if with this, with the house on the corner, if, if you could make it a little smaller so that it was within the variance, uh, would it still be conforming to the nature of the neighborhood? Could you make the house smaller and still conform to the nature of the neighborhood?
Depends on how much smaller, if you were to conform. So your question, we can make sure I got it right, is that if this front yard setback were conforming at fifty feet throughout, what was the follow-up?
By ma, by making the house smaller?
Right.
You know, just redesigning the plan for the house?
Okay.
Would it still be, your concern was conforming with the neighborhood? Could, could you still make a smaller house that would be, you can go on ordens and still conform with the neighborhood? Or is that simply not possible?
And not to be flippant, you can certainly build a smaller house. To go with fifty feet, here's the fifty-foot front yard all the way down. So at this end of the lot, you're going way, 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 way back, okay? Which means that this house either gets pushed towards the middle property line and gets smaller, reduces the space in the house, or, uh, like, there was Mr. Hollis and Mr. Suntory said that it would make it a long trailer-like kind of home, and that would certainly be out of character for the neighborhood. So can any of these be moved, certainly?
I'm just trying to get the setback.
Yeah, well, you wanted to eliminate, I don't, eliminating the setback altogether would be extremely difficult, again, because Dogwood Lane is a blank. And every home in the neighborhood, referring to A one now, is showing that all these homes are square, but skewed to the street. Just as subject property currently is and is proposed under the current proposal, so that everything is setback roughly in character. Could it be set back more? Absolutely. Is it desirable to set it back more? I'm not the applicant or the builder, is it more marketable now, perhaps?
I, I appreciate that. Next has more question.
Yeah.
Previous picture of this one.
Okay, with the.
You mentioned that the, the front yard, this, this side is the front.
So we're on sheet, uh.
That, that, that they work, that's a good.
Sheet floor before I get out of there.
You mentioned this is the front yard, that's the driveway.
So there's a front yard facing Plymouth and a front yard facing Dogwood.
Okay.
And there's also, because there are two front yards, there are also two side yards and two rear yards, depending upon the definition of the ordinance, and I would rely on.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but literally the front door is here.
That is correct.
There's a room here that's called a foyer on the architect proposal.
Okay.
Um, so would this, just out of curiosity, would this house have a Plymouth drive address or a Dogwood address?
I'm gonna, actually, Mr. Hollis, you would have an answer to that, I would guess.
Tax, tax assessor signs that.
Yeah, usually.
Post office.
I think, and Mr. Hollis, I think it's most likely. And doesn't matter, but looks like it would probably be. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Look, just, what are the sizes of each of the houses?
Sizes of each of the houses? Well, you know, I'm looking at Mr. Hollis' plan, it says conceptual drawing.
And now, they don't know.
So I don't know if I can help you with it. Mr. Hollis, you got any? But they are conforming.
Eleven thousand square foot house, I'm trying to figure out.
Correct, what these are in comparison. They are conforming in terms of, of building cover, previous cover, block cover. So Hollis, you know what these are roughly? On some. Tough for an engineer, man.
Somebody else to ask the question, or they do.
The footprint of the house on lot five would be twenty-eight hundred twenty. And the footprint on that, on the interior lot is twenty-two, twenty-two, that's the footprint.
Well. So roughly six thousand, five thousand, thank you, Mr. Suntory. You're a better an engineer, still has.
Okay, this. Of course, you wanna, you know.
Hi, I'm Matthew MacRae, forty-one Plymouth Drive, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this question, but why can't the houses be made smaller so you don't need all these variances?
No, we don't need variances on the houses, ma'am, we don't need any.
Whatever you need, why can't you go do what you have to do without affecting the whole neighborhood?
We'd have to make.
I realize my house isn't up to code or anything, I don't know, should I buy one?
Can I ask the first part of the question?
Sure.
There's nothing we can do to the size of the houses that will change any of the variances before you. The only thing we could change would be the size of the lots.
Mm-hmm.
And we are conforming within just over a hundred feet, lot sizes, which are in conformance with current standard.
Mm-hmm.
Not with the way the neighborhood was built.
Yes, I understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is the what is the benefit, we have two houses that are up to code, and that's gonna make our neighborhood better? Because they conform to?
It's among the many benefits that when judging a conforming application by the board.
Mm-hmm.
When they go through the positive and the negative.
Right.
And everything here is conforming, except this one a lot.
Right.
Which is pre-existing.
I understand.
And there's nothing we can change on that, but among the benefits of granting this application as opposed to, again, conforming application.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to allowing somebody to come in. For the fully conforming application for the one lot. Is that this board, is that this board has full control over it?
Mm-hmm.
And they can put in the stormwater, which has been proposed.
Right.
Which means that there will be less stormwater generated by these properties than currently, but it will be managed. The tree that are being proposed to be removed will be managed. Drainage is going to be managed.
Mm-hmm.
We're proposing not a monster house that is not in character with this neighborhood.
Have you been to our neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am, in fact, I was there, I mean, it started, we were here at seven, I was here uh, this afternoon, as well as a few other times, yes, ma'am.
Well, of course, you think it's a great idea, so there's no question me asking you how you think this fits in our neighborhood.
Ma'am, my job is not to say whether it's a great idea or not.
Oh, it's my job to tell you it's a lousy idea, and if you don't have enough room, then you need all these variances, then it doesn't fit.
Chairman, we're talking about comments now, ma'am, there's a place for that.
I'm allowed to make a comment?
Yeah, right.
Later.
Oh, still?
Right now.
How does the comments section happen, I'm going to leave and go to.
Other questions?
You need a drink.
You made one for everyone. Like kindergarten. Just remember, I'm William Penny from, uh, fourteen Plymouth Drive.
The way you're presenting this, um, you come in, you gave everybody your resume, obviously it's extensive. And you have a lot of experience. Who's paying your, um, fees?
The applicant.
The applicant.
Yep.
So is it?
The applicant is paying, if I may finish the question. The applicant is paying his attorney, his engineering, the applicant is also paying for these three people to be. Through their, their.
Now, when, at the end of your presentation.
Yes.
You presented all the benefits that this was gonna do. And then you said, well, in terms of the negatives, and it was very, very, very brief, what you said. You said, uh, some of the, uh, people have some concerns about water, okay. Do you, is it fair to say that your presentation was clearly biased in favor of getting this project done?
No.
Okay. You do not think that you presented in such a way that you were clearly advocating for this to be, uh, to this, to be go ahead?
I'm not advocating, sir. My job as a professional planner licensed by this, by examination, by study, is to present the application in accordance with the municipal land use law, which is a volume of law about this thing. The interpretations about this thing, and to show the board whether or not this application meets those criteria, that is my job. And I defer to anybody who would like to correct me on that.
And as I read.
Yes.
The, um, ma, mission statement of the Berkeley Heights Planning Board, which I cited at the beginning. It seems to me that there's a very big question about this project really blending environmentally with what is existing there.
Do you have a question for me, sir, as opposed to a comment which?
And I, I gotta say, you gave a very extensive, uh, you know, presentation, but I, um, it's not my turn to comment.
Okay.
But it seemed that, uh, you did not list the negative aspects of this project.
I'll leave that for your comments, then.
Other questions?
David Fellin, one eighty-two Dogwood, I was, swear, I was only gonna be here for drainage, that's a, I told you, I'm only gonna be here, but something you said did bother me.
Game's almost over at this point.
Something you said bothered me about the, and Ms. Pogue asked the question. Um, you suggested, but in fact, you have no evidence that Township altered the tax maps in nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and four, is that correct?
Yes, they did, and the evidence is in the, uh, the exhibits we presented, we have presented.
Actually, as you said, we could go to the right, your testimony was that you suggested that happen.
No, no, it did happen. You can see it in the exhibits, and I'll show you why, because in.
You, you have no exhibit.
May I?
Nope, you have no, no, it's my question first, sir.
I'm answering your question, sir.
You have no exhibit that showed, because I can tell you, as the mayor during that time period, the engineering department did nothing nefarious.
Did nothing what?
Nefarious, as you suggested, to change taxes.
I said nothing about nefarious, I made no suggestion whatsoever. The que, answer to your question, sir, is, has evidence been presented to this board to show that the tax matters or change? The answer is yes, and the answer is yes, because I will show you, and this has been presented to the board. These lots are fifteen and sixteen on the subject property. That was so until two thousand and four. In two thousand and four, this property became lot four. The maps were changed.
It couldn't be, I'm lot four, so it couldn't have been lot four, right?
Lot five is, I'm correct, thank you very much.
Um, is that someone, uh, uh, I, I still don't think you've shown that it was, that was done, but, but as someone who's, has, has, has a small, has a small bit of.
Contrary to that, sir?
Has a small bit of knowledge of what the planning board also does and the responsibilities they have. I seem to remember something about the doctrine of merger. Now, where, one is a substandard lot and one is a conforming lot, and the similar owners have it, aren't the lots automatically merged over time?
As a mere planner, I will say that in practice, not always, uh, sometimes it depends upon a tax map change, and I'm gonna lean towards your engineer to tell us what the rule is here in Berkeley Heights.
I'm, I'm just the.
Can we answer the question?
I'm just, I'm just the citizen resident.
Can we?
I'm the citizen resident.
The question, I think what, um, Mr. Cohen is referring to is that the current, the lot size is about twenty, just under twenty-one thousand square feet, correct? And the current zone ordinance, the R twenty, would require for two lots, twenty-two thousand square feet, correct?
Correct.
And you're not disputing that those two previous lots were in common ownership from the date it was subdivided until today, correct?
Not disputing it in any way, in fact, our exhibits to this board show that.
So those, one or both of those lots had to be nonconforming as lot size, correct, at a minimum?
I'm not gonna ask, um, Mr. Hollis, do you recall if the two lots fourteen and fifteen were conforming or non-conforming?
There's not twenty-two thousand square feet.
So therefore they cannot be conforming. Whether the interior lot was conforming or not, I do not know. Hollis, did you have an answer to that?
Well, let me, if I could just finish answering my question.
Certainly.
So it's not inconceivable that those two lots based upon the doctrine of merger merged into a single conforming lot, correct?
Not inconceivable.
Okay, I think that's what you're getting to, so that is, that would explain why there's a single lot now, correct?
It would be an explanation, yes, thanks.
Anybody else with a question?
Anybody else with a question? You wanna do your closing?
Oh, does, does anybody wanna?
Public comment, alright, who wants to do a public comment? Doesn't have to be a question, it can be. A law is a law and ordinance is an ordinance, it has to have a really good positive reason. To break the ordinance, and there's, the positives don't outweigh the negatives to the neighborhood. The water especially, the trees especially, the, the double setback or whatever they wanna call that. Especially, those, those are non-conforming things and they're simply not legal, unless you guys let them have the ordinance and the variance. So I just wanna say to the board, uh, I'm against it, I've been there thirty-two years. Uh, I'm conforming to the neighborhood and this thing across the street with the eleven bedrooms combined and the eighty-eight hundred square feet of. Um, non-appropriate, uh, uh, ground, it's, it's just, it doesn't fit the neighborhood. Hold on, stop. I'm okay with eleven thousand feet, I know they'll never do that, but let them do it, I'm okay with one big house, cause I know. There probably will, there'll still be a lot of ground, the tree won't be all taken out, it would probably be better for the neighborhood to have one house instead of. Um, instead of two, just like there is there now, there's one house there now, and it's fine, it's old, seventy years old, I get it, build a new house. Knock yourself out, but don't, let's not break the rules, um, because someone wants to divide the property, probably for profit. I'm just guessing on that one, of course, uh, but thank you very much, appreciate what you guys do, I really appreciate what you do.
And I'll never give you that.
No, you're gonna get appointed to be on the board.
I'm gonna speak for a second a little bit more practically, they're building a new house on the intersection of Dogwood and Lenape, where the. And it's a monstrous house on, on the lot there, it has been in construction for more than a year. They are storing building supplies on the street, and they have for months. Now, for, luckily, too many cars come by there. Because of the way that street is configured, but it's not right. You're gonna build two big houses on smaller lot. And where are they gonna store the building supplies, all up and down the street? It's gonna go on for well more than a year, it is gonna be a major inconvenience to myself. And my neighbors, and as a Berkeley Heights resident, I would ask you as members of the board. Just think about this, if this project was being proposed to be built across the street from your house. What would you do? And I'm betting that every one of you would say no. Thanks.
Okay, this man bought a house, he paid too much for it, assumed even back then that he could subdivide for two houses and found out he couldn't. So he's just been renting this out constantly, not maintaining the property, it looks bad. And there's no reason he needs two houses to upset the whole neighborhood, he's never lived in our neighborhood, he lives somewhere else in town. And I know my have grandchildren in town and there's four kindergarteners, called kindergartens now, they've resectioned the schools. You can't go to Mary Kay if you live from this part of Mountain Avenue on, now everybody wants to live in our neighborhood because they wanna go to Mountain Park. So, I'm sure there are people who buy it, I mean, we got that two-point-eight million on Mountain Avenue, but they reduced it. So it's only two-point-seven, so it should fly off the market real soon. We don't need this in our neighborhood, it's lovely, we're all happy the way they are, we would prefer one house. Let them get a pool and a tennis court and we'll all be good friends. That's all, he doesn't need two houses, one house is fine, don't destroy our neighborhood, please.
David Cohen, I'm only talking about drainage, just that, uh, the big, the big issue and, uh. I know the applicant has committed to maintaining the swell, keeping the tree line between our properties, but the. Construction on Dogwood, unfortunately, even in conforming houses, has caused a drainage nightmare. My neighbor talked about the monster across the street that is literally in my, in my neighbor, the Clemente's living room. Um, and we have had construction on our street. And no one in town's done anything about materials being stored, equipment being stored on the street, rocks being on the street, they've run over all our lawns. And unfortunately, I've known Rich probably forty years, uh, Rich is older for the record, by the way, I was a teenager, um, and argued for a long time, so. It, you, the biggest issue, unfortunately, they, they are. They are somewhat victimized with what we've gone through with the recent development on the street, we've tried, we've put over twenty thousand dollars in drainage into our house. Uh, and the problem is, we all know we can't, we cannot contemplate just for the three-year storm. I wouldn't wanna pull in tennis courts, uh, on it, because that creates more surface issues, but the problem is, is a real one, of how do we maintain that? Uh, that drainage issue of maintaining enough in light of all these storms so that my neighbors aren't flooded, I'm not flooded. I think that's our, one of our biggest issues that we've raised the concerns, and I, and if you've, I, I heard the planner say you went up to the street. This afternoon, and you, really, if you saw the houses going with, with a bridge, that, that doesn't even belong in Berkeley Heights, but. Um, we've, we're, we're very jaded by the fact of how badly that's been monitored and how badly the construction's gone. When I saw it was to get the development, and literally, we had months where they were pumping water. Out of the construction onto all the neighbors' property because they couldn't go quickly enough to get it framed. It raises the question of, if you're gonna redevelop a property, what commitments will the board require with regard to stormwater management during construction? My recollection is, there's not much that was ever thought about in that, but now when people are excavating and moving so much dirt. That should be consideration because we know the dry wells are probably one of the last things that go in to actually manage it, but what we've found on our street is. These houses went up, new development, so expansive, they were making piles of dirt, that were then creating rivers of water that came down. So I think that's one, the other consideration, and on the drainage, I ask any development, I would hope. Would, would include the Belgium block curbing to the storm drains, because that is killing the township in terms of. Re, resurfacing streets versus reconstructing streets is a problem. And unless on streets we actually do wall-to-wall Belgium block curbing, drainage will never go right. But the more we do, we put most of our frontage when, uh, when we redid our house after I may have caused a little fire in it, but, um. Uh, but our, but that's one thing that is vital, is the construction. Uh, I think we'd also ask in any construction that, uh, in terms of the tree. Removal and placement that there be an assessment done, uh, only because we've had some come down recently, and I think all the ashes are coming. Gonna have to come down, and the number unfortunately gonna come on our house, uh, that. It may be better in terms of tree replacement to replace them with, uh, you know, annual trees, perennial trees that will, will stay. As opposed to some because of that, uh, the ash disease, so my neighbors have said their other comments, but I think the drainage, I wanted to give some context of where we're coming from. Thanks.
Uh, Michael Gertzma, forty Plymouth Drive. Um, I wanna echo the water problems, I foresee that as something that is gonna be very difficult to handle. And can, could be detrimental to the neighborhood in, in many ways. Um, the trees, I, I, I'd like to see a, as many of these trees saved as possible to keep. The neighborhood the way it is, uh, today. Um, as far as the, the variances go, I had a house built as well on Plymouth Drive, uh, about twenty years ago. And made doubly sure that, uh, I followed all of the codes here in Berkeley Heights, I didn't ask for any variances. I changed my plans to meet Berkeley Heights's needs. Um, I'd just like to see that kind of consideration when you're evaluating this project as well. Um, that's all I have to say, thanks.
Rich Bauer, I live on Debbie Place, happen to be the builder, just like to address a couple of comments that the neighbors have made. I've done a lot of projects in this town and surrounding towns, uh, you can ask Tom for this town. I haven't had problems during construction, I haven't had problems afterwards, where people say you caused a new water issue. Uh, as far as this guy up the street building. Uh, if you're storing stuff on the street, I'm sure the town's got rules on that, uh, and I don't think you should hold. Something another builder's doing against me, because I haven't, I don't even know who's building that house, I have nothing to do with it. Uh, the water runoff and the trees, the town has stormwater process, they have a tree ordinance, has to be followed. What we're proposing is consistent with not this big house, but other new builds in the neighborhood. Uh, and somebody could take a ranch house that's in the neighborhood now, put a second floor on it. You know, I could take my house's two thousand square feet, put a second floor on it, and that was four thousand square feet. The current house has no water, stormwater management, so anything that gets done there is gonna be an improvement. Uh, we did lay it out, uh. Going for no variance with the front yard setback, and the problem is it pushes the house towards the interior of the lot. So now you have no backyard, there's, if you come up Dogwood, there's the first house on the right. Their patio and play area and everything's out the side of the yard, you see right from the street, which to me is unattractive. So, we looked at it and said, we would have to keep sort, like stepping the house back because the building envelope goes up at an angle. Not attractive, so we said, how do you make a house that's gonna be attractive, let's start that side. And see what we come up with, and that's how we came up with the, uh, front yard setback, which again is only on the. The, the bigger parts is really only where the front porch has a roof over it in the corner of the garage. Uh, that made the house attractive, it kept it so the patio where the deck could be behind the house. Not out off the end of the house where everybody driving by sees it. So there was a lot of effort and time put in to try and design a house that would be aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. Uh. Years ago, I did have somebody that wanted to do an eight thousand square foot house there, stucco finishes, it was ugly, and I told him no, cause I'm not gonna do it. It's not attractive to the neighborhood, everything I've done in town, the houses fit in. They might be bigger than some of the houses here that are current, but you'll find that a lot of people that are buying these current-sized houses. Are blowing up the second floors and on to them, they're not gonna stay tiny forever, and you can see that throughout the whole town. Uh, so. You know. We came up with a plan that hopefully is attractive to the neighborhood, is an improvement for the neighborhood. We're gonna control the water, we're gonna take care of the trees, uh, if they got problems with the other builder, go after him, go down to town hall. Talk to Tom, talk to, uh, Joe, find out if they're doing something they shouldn't be doing, but, you know, don't make that my issue, I'm not the one doing it, thank you.
Anyone else?
So. You know, these are interesting applications, and I've done many of them in many different towns and many in this town, before the zoning board, before this board. And I've lived here my entire life, you know, I've been here since, uh, born here in nineteen sixty-nine. And I've watched the development in my neighborhood, I've watched the development all throughout the town, I've done development in the town. And what I have done, and what I've represented builders in doing, and what Mr. Bauer's doing is. I try and always find the character consistency of the neighborhood, and I think Mr. O'Brien put it aptly, which is. And I can go through, I mean, I did Maple Avenue, so I did the subdivision on Maple, that was before this board. That lot was a little over seventeen thousand square feet in an R fifteen zone, where every single lot was. Eighty-five hundred, nine thousand in the neighborhood, create a nine, get an R fifteen zone, all the way down Maple, there was like twenty-something non-conforming lots. And I could have built a monster house on the corner and overshadowed the house next to me. And I smashed the roofs down, built two smaller homes in character and conformity with the neighborhood. This board granted that subdivision for eighty-five hundred square foot lots in a fifteen thousand square foot zone. And the reason that was done was because it made sound planning sense, and it fit. And if you drive by there today, and if you look down Maple Avenue with the first two houses on the corner of Maple. And Springfield, the first house on Maple and Springfield, the one in. You go right down through and it looks like the setbacks are maintained and the houses are feeling the same, and I think that's what you see here, we're trying to build. Not a monster house like Mr. Batters said of eight thousand square feet or eleven thousand square feet, which honestly, in this marketplace, probably could go. In some kind of compound-style structure, I mean, it's not, it would not be uncommon at this point, from what I see. Um, you know, I've done, I've represented a lot of development up on Lenape in the area, Kent. And the houses are between thirty-five hundred and forty-five hundred square feet, I know the one that everybody's talking about, it's over five thousand, I'm told. Um, but the very front of Dogwood is an example of what not to happen. And it happened because, I don't know why it happened, I mean, I did that application, it made no sense to me at the time, because we were creating a conforming interior lot. At twenty thousand square feet, and the other lot, um, was resulting in slight deficiency because of the corner lot again, and that's really what you're seeing here, the corner lot is pushing this. We have two lots that are over twenty thousand square feet, but the corner lot, extra dimension is really creating it, but in this instance. You have this right-of-way, this natural barrier and buffer that's creating the visual setback, that's consistent with the zone. You're getting that fifty foot, even in the smallest part, and you're almost at sixty foot in the regular part, so when you look at this, it's not jumping up on the road. Or as close as you can spit at according to one of the people, it's not the case at all. And this double front setback is not something we created, as was referenced by one of the people, it's not, not something we're creating, it's what the zone indicates is required. So, you know, it's just is a natural issue that gets created by this, but if you look at Dogwood. Okay, and I remember this application, I remember saying, like, please don't deny this application, because you're gonna end up with a disaster, and you did. Because that house at the edge of Dogwood is a disaster, there's a twenty, there's a twelve-foot fence that lady, that lady erected right next to her thing with lattice, that's painted black. Because their technical side yard, which is really a rear yard, is twelve feet from her property dominating her house. Because with complete conformity, he built a very long skinny pencil house all the way up Dogwood. With a wacky side yard with a trampoline, as Mr. O'Brien indicated, uh, or. You know, there's a trampoline on the side, and there looks like this big vacant lot, there should be a house on. And what was gonna be proposed was a house in character and conformity, what was going on on Mountain, and you end up with these out-of-character scenarios. Saw it on Cornell, we've seen it on Washington Avenue in town, where you get these lots that are, they're the biggest lot in the neighborhood. And the problem is, is that you're looking as if, okay, well, we can't let this be non-conforming, well, what is really non-conformity here, eight inches? Eight inches on width that is only required at a hundred foot for everybody else, but a hundred and twenty on that lot. So we're eight inches off, that's pretty diminutive, so it's about as diminutive as you're gonna get. And then on the area, once again, you know, if you factor in the area of the right-of-way, we're well over, because we're at eleven by. Two hundred, I think, right there, or close to one, so we're like over two thousand square foot of actual. Yard that's going to be grass lawn, that's gonna be right up to the curb. That is still absorbing all that, and that's not even counting in the regular impervious surface coverage limits and coverage elements that we're not touching. That we're not even approaching the twenty-five, we're not exceeding the twenty-five percent, so when we look at a conformity character, we're building homes. That are essentially in conformity with almost every aspect of your zoning ordinance, and really what's happening is that the corner lot. Is triggering this element, and obviously the irregular shaped nature of how it kind of skews down. Towards that one angle, which is starting to make it, and which is why it was stepped back. You know, I know my client spent a lot of time with his engineer, uh, I spend time with the engineer as well, I do a lot of projects in the town. I want everything to look well, I'm not looking to create these monster problems, but the reality is, and I think this is what Mr. O'Brien was saying. You know, we've had two experts testify at great length tonight that are really experienced people that have done. Loads of projects in different capacities. And they've talked about the things that they can do and what, what is compliant, we indicated we can comply with Mr. Sefaro's. Um, requirements as it pertains to stormwater or otherwise, the reality is, is neighbors don't want change, and I get it. I deal with it every single day, but that's not what the law is, it's not what the law says, it's not what the boards are functioning for. The boards don't function, if you didn't hear variance applications, then what are you doing? Couple site plans here and there, you know, the bottom line is, is that variances are a natural part of the board's function, and while, I think Mr. Johnson put it aptly. And while I think Mr. Johnson put it aptly, I wouldn't even be so bold to come here to bring in this particular thing, a 50 foot wide lot in this scenario. Because I already know it's a waste of time because it would be so egregiously non-conforming to anything in the neighborhood. And there are as many applications as I come before the boards on, I will tell you, there's as many applications as I don't represent people because I tell them based on my experience and based upon my understanding that this, I don't need to take your money because you're just going to waste a lot of money and a lot of time for nothing. And, you know, they always can get some other attorney to go do it, but I can tell you, I reject applications all the time that I think are just not sensible. This is about as sensible and as normal, uh, this is almost as conforming as you could possibly imagine. When I looked at it, I was like, wow, this is like the most minor, minor subdivision I think I've ever done. It was not completely conforming. There's like nothing here. And I think that I recognize what they're saying, but if you look at Mr. Cohen's lot is a perfect example. By us not pushing that into a big skinny long pencil, driving all the way down and making it conforming with the setback, to have this big trailer like structure all the way down towards Mr. Cohen. We preserved a natural boundary of that swale and we've maintained all of those highly mature trees along that rear line. Now, in any development, you're going to have trees that are going to be cut. And that's why there's an ordinance that requires certain replacement elements and components. And we're going to comply with that. We're going to comply with all the stormwater. And as far as during construction, Mr. Cohen's right. There's not really a specific standard that governs during construction. However, that's not completely accurate. You know, you're not dealing with, you can't really deal with the final stormwater management components because a lot of this stuff can't even be built because you can't tie leaders and gutters into something that isn't built yet. And that kind of comes towards the latter part. But there is something that is required and there's a lot of barrier maintenance, silt fencing. There's hay structures, soil stabilization requirements. So it's not as if there aren't mechanisms within the ordinance. And to Mr. Bauer's point, it's extremely critical to understand as much as the neighbors have been inconvenienced by the monster that apparently is being constructed up there, you're absolutely right. You can't put building materials in the street. Make a phone call. It's not this board's edification. You can't deny this application because some other builder put materials in the street. If this builder puts materials in the street, he should be called on and he should be violated and cited accordingly. Because there's plenty of room within which to construct these materials and stage them at the houses accordingly. It's just, would be normal function, and especially this particular circumstance, that you would go and build one after the next. And one would get framed first because you're using the same framing crew. You're not framing two at once. It's just not normal. I've built two homes, three homes in plenty of places. I don't frame all three with three separate crews. You hire one framer, he comes and he frames one house. That means you staged the lumber in and around that one house. And then when you finish framing the one house, use the second house to stage additional lumber. So there's plenty of room and plenty of manipulation that you can do. I've built plenty of homes in the town and there's a lot of ways to do it. And I've done it without putting a single piece of material in the street and on tighter lots than this. So I, I just want to, you know, extremely emphasize that while everyone is objecting to it, there's not been one piece of expert testimony offered. And that's the thing that I keep seeing before these boards. A bunch of people come up and they say, we don't want this. This is going to be terrible. They could do so many other things. Why are they doing this? They shouldn't have variances. They're not complying with code. Well, that's why we're here, because we don't exactly comply with the code. But as our experts have indicated, in this instance, they can comply with all of these engineering style things. And, you know, this board is a very educated board that's seen a lot of different applications. And I know, you know, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Kingsley have been on this board for years and years and years and seen a lot of things. I mean, there's no question. And honestly, thank you for your service because that consistency is part of what I rely on in terms of trying to advise people as well to, to give the best thing. And, you know, as far as the newer members, I see the attentiveness that's being placed. Mr. Popolo has a ton of experience in terms of the construction and otherwise. And, uh, you know, and obviously Ms. Pope's been on these board for quite a while too. So you, you look at this and I just implore you to not say, okay, well, the residents don't really seem to want this. This looks like it's a bad idea. It's not that at all. This is a very, very conforming subdivision that makes perfect sense. And when you do something otherwise and you end up with these houses where eventually people drive by and it's like duck, duck, goose. And you wonder like, how the heck? Why the heck did that ever get built like that? It doesn't make any sense because it's out of character and conformity. And I'm telling you, from my perspective, character and conformity consistency is so critical because it creates that visual acuity within a neighborhood. It just makes sense. This application makes absolute sense. And I would just ask that the board board in favor of it.
All right. Lady on the board, you want to make any comments?
I just had a quick question about to understand the impervious surface. Can I ask another question at this point? Yeah, all right. Looking over here, so right now, it says it's 11.64%. Total impervious coverage?
Oh, existing.
Existing, sorry. The existing is 11.64. And then if you take these two numbers and you add them together, you know, it's about, what is it? I gotta do the math, 43%. So how does that impact the, the drain? I mean, it's like, it's like doubling or more than that. It's like four times the impervious surface.
I think it goes back down to what I was saying, which is each lot, being a 20,000 square foot lot is entitled to 25,000.
Now, I know you're entitled to.
So I mean, I, I mean 25%, I'm sorry, combined. So the reality of it is, and I think that Mr. O'Brien touched on it a little bit and Mr. Hollow certainly did, um, there are no mitigation measures presently there. And I think if we get back to where Mr. Sefaro comes in, we have to submit these things. So when we start to control this water and we start to deal with this development and, you know, one of the, I think astute observations by Mr. Maderos was, you know, can we flip this? And the answer is yes. Let's flip it. Let's, let's save a couple of those extra trees. And let's, you know, slide it, you know, within that confines, hold that boundary. But the reality of it is, is that, you know, when, when you're kind of all said and done, you're, you're still dealing with, you know, if you think of it this way, you're, you're at 25% of 42,000. You're over 10,000 square. So you're looking at what's there, but you're not looking at what we can do. And the reality is, it's, it's the same. When you look at the math, it becomes essentially for all intents and purposes, the same. And I think that's really what you have to look at. And then the difference is, is if we do all that big monster kind of style development, then obviously you're back to just your normal, you know, permits and no real oversight or control.
One large house, you would still, you have one driveway, maybe one patio instead of two driveways.
But you're still dealing with massive amount of impervious coverage. You can go right up to the, right up to 10,000 square feet. So it's the same net, net, net. It's just you're taking the numbers and you're doing, you're just, they become the same mathematically.
What I wanted to make in Mr. Brian talked a lot about what the planning board should do, how you should design and cited the, uh, the positive and the negative criteria. And I'm just going to read from this section that pertains to that. If an applicant approves, approves the positive criteria of a C1 or C2 variance, the board may not exercise its power to grant the variance unless the so-called negative criteria has been satisfied pursuant to the last unlettered paragraph of NJSA, et cetera. No variance or other relief may be granted unless the applicant must prove that the variances could be granted, must prove one, that the variances could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And I'll rest there because that's my, my major concern is this. Does the public perceive this as a good project? And my focus would be to minimize the detrimental impact to them as much as possible. And I think what, in their perspective, what they see is a lot, a very wooded lot that, and they've also experienced a lot of flooding. Trees absorb a lot of water and the fewer trees that you take off of that lot, the better. So I appreciate your willingness to, to move the property. I think that's the right thing to do. And I would insist on that as part of my approval of.
Thank you. And I do want to just bring up one, um, point as to what you're saying. And it's not the public's perception. That's not the standard, right? And I think that's really the difference. The public perceives that this is not good. It's just whether there is or is not. So it's not, of course, they're going to say there is not. But it's the board's function to determine whether there is or is not. And I do think that Mr. O'Brien's testimony was fairly clear. And I don't know that anyone's asked Mr. Trost, you know, his analysis of it. But, you know, obviously there's been an extensive amount of planning testimony, which I know Mr. Trust indicated that he needed to see certain proofs. And I hope to think that we've met each one of those this evening because I think we have.
One thing that concerns me about the water is, you know, water finds its way downhill, you know? So, um, with climate change, whether you believe it or not, I happen to believe in it. The storms are getting worse, they're getting more intense. And so it doesn't just worry me. And I'm concerned about your neighborhood, don't get me wrong. But also the downhill, like down Park Avenue and then how it filters down to all those other streets. So, you know, that is always my concern when you start taking out, you know, trees and adding more impervious surface. And that's just a concern that.
No, no, and look, you know, Ms. Pope, it's logical.
Soil, because it's, it's, you know, when you're putting up two houses, you're taking two basements. You're adding another driveway. So it's, it's just not the tree roots. It's, it's the overall soil. And, and on top of that, I'm, I'm just, you know, I've sat here a long time. But, you know, we have corner lot rules for a reason because corners are different. So it might not be as many feet, but there's a reason why they want corners to be bigger. You know, the R20 zone was put in, I think, back in the, like, late, early 90s, I think. And, you know, Dogwood and Mountain Avenue and that quarter of the town, they intentionally, you know, kept that and bigger, deeper, pretty much. So I understand the map with, the map here. But the map that you guys gave us highlights what I'm thinking of the area that you put, which is the little tiny houses around Plymouth. But what you didn't address was the portions on my blocks all around it that are really big, the beautiful lots. And that's kind of the beauty of this perimeter of the town. So I think you have to really say, is this, that, is it really, you know, for the good of? My guess is they put this together when they were telling everybody our 20 zone because it wasn't conforming. And I always think you have to be really careful to go from fully conforming to not be conforming in a neighborhood where, you know, I don't think, I don't, I think you have to look at the whole neighborhood. And we're really just looking at the whole neighborhood.
Not just a little area. I agree with you, Jean.
And decide because it, it's, it's a tough, this is.
I would say two things. Number one, to your point, right? You say corner lot should conform, but the houses right there don't. For 40 foot, we're proposing 46 plus a 11 foot, so 57 visual acuity, right? So 57 feet from Plymouth or I guess Dogwood, whatever, on that side. But and then the ones, the ones next to it, right in here, they're, they're, we're at 40. This is like a 40, because one is like seven. So, I mean, we're way superior to what's right in here. And we're talking about the area, especially this little project that we're talking about here, which is this, this whole thing. I mean, every other lot is, we're the outlier. We don't make any sense. And that's what we're talking about, that character of the border. As far as the, the coverage, you know, you're back to this issue on coverage, which is it, it doesn't change. You, you can go tomorrow and take out a little mitten, pave the daylights out of the place and put patios out the wazoo and one foundation, two foundations. What's the difference if the, if the one foundation is now 6,000 square feet versus two that are 2,500? Because you can do it. And that's, that's really what Mr. O'Brien's saying. Don't get caught up in this idea of eight inches being the denominator here because that's what we're talking about. There's been no real testimony other than you shouldn't do this because of X. We're creating, like we said, drainage, others, you know, there's, we're creating all these things that be able, that are not there currently to help mitigate these efforts. And I do recognize what Ms. Pope says is that, you know, of course, there's water elements and components. But one of the whole things in this particular plan is we kept that whole back swale untouched. We kept all those trees untouched. We kept the buffer, you know, to be able to allow for that. Plus then dealing with all that onsite water regulation, regulation and maintenance. So this is a sound engineering plan. It is a sound planning plan. And if no one were here, this would have been over in nine seconds tonight. And I hate to say that, but that's the reality.
I don't know about that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you know, look, this is, this is not a.
Anyone assume.
No, no, I mean, but I'm, I'm just saying that you, you can't look at what the neighbors are saying as a basis of determining.
I came in here not knowing if anyone was going to be here. I went to the property myself and, and looked around and I saw those trees and I saw the corner property, I saw the beauty. And I came in with my own concerns. Um, but I also want to piggyback on what Jean said, you know, part of the negative criteria, the intent and purpose of the zone ordinance. There was a reason that ordinance was changed to the R20. And I, I think, like I said before, it might be opening a can of worms. What if every resident starts coming in and asking us to, to not go by the ordinance?
Well, but that happens all the time. That's your job, right? I mean, that's why you're here. You, you, you deal with these applications all the time. And what we're talking about in this instance is you're asking for your 20,000 square foot lots. Well, we got them, 20,000 and 20,922. One subcomponent of that ordinance is saying, oh, by the way, but on a corner, we want it a little bit bigger. But the reality is the, the actual land that you're dealing with is well over 22,000 because we're putting in coverage and grass that's going to be over 22,000. So when you look at this lot, it's going to look and appear that it's over 22,000 square feet. It's just that it's the town right of way that's never going to be touched. And now it becomes this technical requirement based upon the fact that the road is skewed in an angle that's triggering this irregularity and it's still to maintain.
I, I know how I'm feeling.
No, no, I get it, I get it.
Rest of the board is yelling?
I mean, I'm kind of new to the, the board.
That's good sometimes.
New perspective.
I don't know, you know, as it relates to kind of the flooding and stuff that happens on Plennis Drive. I mean, I see the base, the root cause of that is the town's sewer system ultimately. I mean, I, I don't know whether if you did or didn't anything there, that's, that's going away or that's not going to get worse, right? I can certainly understand taking trees away. And I think, you know, the, I don't know if making more impervious, a portion of this more impervious is offset by the storm water management that's going to be put in place. And I guess the goal is ultimately to have that net to zero, which leaves you to the situation you are now. Um, so I'm kind of assuming that those, the rules that we have in place with respect to replacing trees and that is supposed to offset all this. You know, all the stuff that happens with respect to the other house that's being built and stuff like that is certainly, I don't think that relates to this. I certainly, certainly think that's an issue should it be addressed elsewhere. But I don't know that it is directly attributable to this. So, um, it sounds like a lot of discussion is kind of regarding the drainage and so forth, which is probably one of my prior concerns. If I, again, if I was living across the street from this, I sure as hell want, want to know that I'm not going to be impacted, whether it be dark construction or otherwise. I don't know that the variances in and of themselves, I, I just don't see them as a big deal. Um, I, I agree that we have rules and you have to ask for the variances and we have to say yes ultimately. I don't know that those are the critical factors beyond those first few things, like the drainage and so forth. And, and some of it's making sure that all those things that they're supposed to do to offset that gets done right. Grading and the, uh, dry wells and the stormwater management systems. All that stuff is supposed to offset all this. I think the issue is practicality doesn't always appear that way. So, you know, I'm similarly torn, but I guess I'm not sure that I can sit here and say this shouldn't happen just because some of those things where we actually have rules on the books or whatever that it's supposed to deal with at all. So we're saying we have all these rules on the books to deal with all that stuff. But in this instance, right, we can't take that into consideration. So that's what I'm trying to just figure out in my head.
I mean, I, I, as you said, I've been on the board a long time. It's probably one of the more challenging applications. Because I mean, I think the developer has done as much as you potentially could to mitigate the tree issue. You know, they committed to moving the house over to provide the 18 foot offset to the neighbor's house. They've added trench drains on the driveways to make sure all the water is being piped into a storm system and not overlaying a flood. You know, could there be screening bushes or whatever put between the inner lot and lot? Six, you know, um, to provide some additional separation because, you know, they had a lot more separation previously. They had a lot more separation previously.
That's whatever would not disturb the existing tree footprint, we could certainly separate.
I think somebody mentioned about, you know, moving the driveway, you know, they.
Moving the driveway was fine, we agreed to that.
Sure trees, you know, very important. Um, you know, with that said, I can't say I'm voting yes yet, but, uh, you know.
I think we could just let our engineer and planners, right? Um, one of, I I think the, my fellow board members here, the the drainage issue seems to be a big issue. There, I know you've reviewed this many, many times, you were getting to this point, um, are there any other things that you would suggest that might? Assist in the drainage issue if this project were to be pulled, that adopted mentioned already, or or that you have mentioned that maybe we could, you could.
Well, again, sure, um, surrounding, so what's presented tonight is conceptual, there's no site plan approval coming for tonight's meeting. So that's something that they could build, um, it could be certain something different in terms of site work and drainage, and I think they. The applicant agreed to investigate doing a hybrid model, something more environmentally friendly, could be rain gardens or a bioswale in addition to. The cisterns and the stupid tanks that were there, I mean, the intent of the drainage of the ordinance is, they got to mitigate three inches, a three-inch rain event. For the net impervious above and beyond what's on the site today, and I can assure you that it will be designed to meet the code, which I do on every problem.
Maybe milk button, probably.
It's it's something that's more larger than what's isolated to this.
It's what I will wish, you know.
That is correct, that is correct. But I do understand the neighbors' concerns.
I mean, obviously, going construction, you know, anything you can do to help.
And don't forget, our chairman, as you're aware, because you're an engineer, I mean, anything over five thousand square feet of disturbance is going to Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. Which is going to govern soil disturbance movement, uh, drainage review and approval as addition to my office. Uh, silt fencing, uh, tree protection, existing drainage infrastructure protection, so there'd be another governmental agency that's, you know. Um, that's going to be part of this project, which, construction officials on the board will not be getting a permit to construct. Until all other jurisdictional agencies have, you know, power over the project, you know, permits are obtained for that work. So that is an additional measure taken into consideration, um, if there's to me, you know, if there's to move forward, so.
You raise an interesting question, Tom, you say this is, this is not a site approval, this is, this is a conceptual plan.
Correct.
So what we're approving tonight, what, what, um, teeth does it have in terms of dictating? What we've been talking about, which is preserving the, 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 the drainage, the, the, um, the trees, the.
That's a good question, uh, and listen, I don't want to step on all these toes here, but it's a subdivision plan. Before, and you're you're asking for the building envelope for each lot, in essence, that's what you're asking for.
Oh, that's the beauty of the meeting, I forgot to ask.
That's that's kind of, that's kind of, that's kind of.
No, I mean, that's, and and I think the, just to expand upon and and kind of, you know, touch on what Mr. Johnson said a second ago. Subject to some of those conditions that we've discussed, so we have the, the conceptual. Building envelopes, but then as we would agree to, okay, look, this building envelope will absolutely maintain this distance, okay? At at a minimum of eighteen feet on that side, we will agree to flip the house so that whatever approval is. So when they go look at it from zoning compliance, they're going to look at a resolution and say, well, this is the driveway has to be on that side and this tree has to be done. And if we submit something different, then it gets shot down through that process. So your teeth is the resolution conditions that Mr. Robertson generates that are consistent with the representations we've made, and any additional conditions that you would put in place. Such as, you know, making sure that that driveway was flipped, or like, I'm sorry.
You have a good question, um, so if we approve a subdivision, and let's say the developer, the builder now pulls out of. What he plans to do, does that mean any other builder comes in and they can do other things the way they want to do things?
They can only do anything in consistent with the ordinance and as it pertains to this specific resolution.
That means that I will have one conforming and one non-conforming lot on the books for, for anyone to purchase.
Well, it's the same.
It'd be two different people purchasing two different lots.
And then someone could, but whatever they're doing, they can't come in, they they can't say, okay, well, you know what, I decided my house needs to be a twenty-five-foot setback on that side. And you're stuck with whatever the resolution that you're approving, so you can't think about who is doing it. Other than the fact that you're creating conditions through Mr. Robertson that you're stating that are then forever memorialized, and then when that person goes in. The first thing that happens, when you submit the building thing, it's going to go to zoning. Okay, so you submit building, but it goes to zoning, and zoning looks at it and says, wait a minute, this is not consistent with the resolution? And then they say, no, no, we're not moving it out of here, they call the person back and say, sorry, you didn't follow the resolu- resolution. So then if it makes it through there, then it eventually finds its way to Mr. Sefaro's desk, where he says, oh, okay, yeah, but. I see this is done, but unfortunately, they didn't put the trench drain that was set in condition number sixteen, that's an engineering element, oh, and by the way, the bioswale that we talked about that I want. Now he's dealing with those components on the lot grading plan, oh, and by the way, Mr. Baco and Mr. Sefaro are dealing with the tree replacement and the placement of that. So when I stated earlier about the number of checks and measures, this is not an easy process. I know everybody thinks you go here before the board, and then there's this big thing and it's over, it hasn't even begun.
I get it.
And I think it's very important to understand how many, I mean, you know, these guys do, you know, I look. I think one of the things that I've had the benefit of doing, and just as a builder and as an attorney. I've dealt with the process and I'm very, very familiar with it, and I will tell you, doesn't matter, I I. Like anything, whatever it is, it is, like, you have to comply, you know, and I've known a lot of these individuals for my entire life, and. They can tell you, I've never once said, hey, you know, it's me, can we bend the rules? That that doesn't work that way.
Never.
So but but my point is, is that anyone who's doing this, that's coming in, is stuck with those approvals. And and that is really what you're setting forth, you're setting forth those parameters for anyone to inherit. Because God forbid, something can happen to Mr. Bowers tomorrow, his estate can inherit it, and they may not be in a capacity to build, and they say, okay, let's just put it up on the market, and we're going to. Go sell these two houses, you're selling the lot without approval, with that resolution condition.
You're selling two different lots.
Two different lots, but it could be two different lots, it could be one builder, it could be whatever, but the bottom line is they're still stuck with whatever we say.
All right.
Okay.
A little late, so I didn't really get.
No problem, that's all right, no problem, and I think Mr., you asked Mr. Trost what his was as well.
Yeah, I I just wanted to give feedback and and what we're saying.
Please hit the party all night, you might as well say something, right?
Well, I probably should be sworn, since I've never been here.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Tell the truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I'm David Trost, and I'm a licensed professional planner and a member of American Institute of Certified Planners. And I'm a licensed landscape architect. Uh, my place of employment is DMR Architects in Hasbrook Heights, and I've been practicing for over forty years. As a planner, thirty-five in New Jersey. I have sat on boards as a professional, I have been with expert witnesses. Uh, before multiple communities, I've also been expert witness before several superior court jurisdictions. So I'm. I may say some things that may be a little different, but that's me. Um, first of all, i- if I were advising the applicant, I would have never put. The houses on those plans, they actually did you a great favor, because now. You can put parameters on those plans based on those buildings. You can move the building over, you can preserve trees. You can do a lot of things other than a normal minor subdivision, all they had to do, minor subdivision, show the building envelopes. And seek the variance, um, or actually not seek any variances. They could have just shown, except for the lot size for the corner lot. Um. Which quite honestly, under the proofs of the municipal land use law, based on my experience. Is approvable, because the word substantial is defined in the law by multiple, multiple cases. And subs- and that number is not substantial, it it isn't. Uh, if it was another five thousand square feet, five thousand square feet, I would say. But a thousand, thousand feet, and it still meets the overall lot requirements, I would say, it it's approved. Um, as far as the variance for the, the, um. There was one that was really minimalist, uh, the lot frontage, that that's clearly the minutes. Uh, and and then you got to go to the purposes of zoning for the, for the other one. And I think the the planner has presented enough testimony to meet the statutory criteria for the word substantial. Um. I would, uh, as far as the negative criteria. I don't think, I think he addressed enough, I think there could be more, and that's where the board comes in. The board can ask for reasonable conditions, which you have done already, move the house, move it back, save that tree. Um. The chairman alluded to it, uh, you could, you, they got how many trees to put back, twenty-five? Make sure some of those trees are placed to be, uh, in between lot six and the new house, you can now require that, you didn't have to. Or he, he would not have had to if if it had been just a subdivision. So he's actually done you a favor by being able to manage what happens on that property, as far as stormwater. All the roof drains got to go into those, uh, those seepage pits. Um, I believe one of the neighbors was talking about putting some Belgium block curb on on this street. To channel some of the water into the current, uh, basin. Um. I know Negli Engineering, they are, I've worked with them for many years, uh, they are also going to look at, okay, and and may, based on a review, they, maybe you need another basin. I don't know, let's look at the flow, they will look at that. Um, what you can't do. Is expect this property to solve the drainage issues of the neighborhood. If they don't put any more drainage on the street, like they're supposed, not supposed to, they've actually complied with the law. But they are seeking some variances, they have a willing developer, uh. Let the engineer, let Negli do their job, I think they're going to be in the best interest of 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 the community, they always have been. You've got over five thousand square feet, if this was just subdivided and lot one came in and and lot, the other lot came in, I don't think that. Hits the five thousand square foot mark, so you're not going to have the Soil Conservation District involved. I think you got a lot of good things going with the subdivision and all the parameters, the question is. Have they met the statutory requirement of the positive and negative criteria? I cannot answer that, only you can. Um, I I can tell you what my experience is, uh, but ultimately you have to reach that conclusion. Uh, I hope I've answered your question.
Hi, anybody have anything else? Robertson?
Well, I can, I will, uh, list the conditions that I noted as the application was proceeding, it's an application as the the board is aware for minor. Subdivision approval, uh, with, uh, three noted variances, one is for the lot area for, uh, the corner lot, lot five. One is the, uh. Eight-inch deviation in the lot frontage on the corner lot, lot five, and the third variance has to do with the. Front setback, the the front setback facing Dogwood. For lot five, which is also the corner lot that has the two, two front, two frontages. Uh, the conditions that I noted, uh, you know, standard conditions, one being compliance with. Uh, the Negli Engineering memo, and, you know, just. Board is aware of it, but just should be pointed out that it's very specific in the memo regarding. If this was to be approved, that the applicant would be required to submit formal plot plans for each lots. Required demonstrate strict, strict compliance with applicable zoning criteria, including improvements plan, grading plan, drainage plan, utility map. Erosion and sediment control, landscaping plan, construction details, or the proposed improvements on each lot. Plot plans have to illustrate stormwater mitigation measures along with drainage calculations. Confirm compliance of the system without applicable stormwater management requirements, and, you know, to demonstrate. Uh, you know, immediate three-inch rainfall depth over net in, over net increase in impervious area on each proposed lot. Uh, also, the reference to all outside approvals, including. Uh, Somerset Union Soil Conservation District approvals, so there are a series of conditions that are included in the Negli memo that would all be required, and you heard the applicant indicate that there. They would comply with all the, all of the conditions and comments in. Uh, the Negli memo, also compliance with the comments, uh, from the. Planners memo as well, also noted, um. That the applicant did agree that the side yard setback between lot five point oh one. And lot six would be, uh, the, you know, a minimum of the eighteen feet. Uh, the, they would, uh. The applicant agreed to maintain the swale at the, the now rear of those, uh. Look to newly created lots, uh, there was a discussion about, uh. Increasing or, uh, increasing or proving the buffer between lot six and new lot five oh one. Applicant agreed to install a trench drain across the driveways. And the runoff would be directed to, uh, the. Rainage basin, uh, the app, they will consider the high hybrid stormwater management controls, uh, in addition to. The dry wells, uh, they will consider rain gardens, applicant agreed to. Uh, relocate the driveway and garage on lot five point oh one. And where to preserve the thirty-foot oak tree that's existing. Uh, the applicant indicated there's another, uh, old oak tree at the corner. Of, of, and Dogwood, where the applicant will attempt to preserve. Um. The applicant, I have a note about stormwater management during construction, but as Mr. Sefaro indicated, that really is a function of Somerset Union. Soil Conservation District, but, uh, it will comply with those stormwater management requirements during construction. Uh, there was a comment regarding insulation and Belgium block curving. Uh, directed to storm basins, again, it's a, uh. Condition for consideration. Uh. Applicant will, uh. Apply with the, uh, co- rate, the not residential, uh. Uh, what about housing residential development, the rate requirements of the township ordinance. They'll be required to contain all outside, required outside approvals.
Those are the comments and conditions of, of, during. I think we should do. Regarding the trees, this is just based on what's proposed today, I think it should just be noted that this could change, right? Right?
What I would recommend in in the bringing up the trees, I I think the trees should be evaluated, um. You can have a nice, beautiful oak tree. Um, that has a a dead hardwood. And I've unfortunately witnessed those in towns I've worked for further west. Uh, where they're, they've got rot and they do fall over. So having an evaluation is important, and and I, the engineer should be involved in that evaluation with with the expert that the applicant hires. And if there is a beautiful tree that has a problem, unfortunately, my recommendation is to take it down. Um, also in my report, if you could add specifically, uh, prior to any construction. That, uh, and after the evaluation of the trees, the trees that are marked to be preserved, prior to any disturbance. Tree protection measures should be put in place.
Great.
Robertson, I know you mentioned that obviously the curving was a matter of discussion, I just. A little bit, maybe a little bit from Mr. Sefaro, my understanding, based on speaking with Mr. Hallows, is there's no curving in the area whatsoever. But there might be some areas that might benefit by flaring around the stormwater to help direct it, because there's obviously going to be some normal overland stuff that's happening that we may. Otherwise contribute to.
Yeah, I agree that, I I have to go take a look at the property.
But but obviously, whatever your recommendations will be, you know, we'll follow those accordingly.
All right, so yes, vote is, proves the application and no vote, nicely rejects.
Right, correct.
We have motion? Vote on this? Second?
To approve or motion?
Motion to approve with condition that you right? That was your motion? Pleasure to clarify.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Maderos?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
This is a tough one. It's very gray for me. It's very gray for me. But listening to our planner, I have to say for the subdivision, I have to vote yes, and I guess we'll see you guys before the board another time when you're ready to build, right?
No.
No.
No? That goes before zoning?
No. That's all for Mr. Salfaro.
As, as long as they're conformant to the approval tonight and the resolution, they will not be coming back to any.
I have to trust Mr. Salfaro too. I know where you live.
You know where I live.
Ms. Kingsley? Mr. Popolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time and consideration. So I know we have the CBS application. I've witnessed came like three and a half hours to drive out here. Can we just pull through a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Three and a half hours.
He's got, he's got to get like, he's got to get a few minutes.
I'm getting too old for this.
I'm still good.
Do you want to take a picture of it, Rich? Rich, you want to take a picture of it?
Appreciate your passion. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Twice a month, depends what's on the agenda. Yeah. I know I could have voted now. I listened to your words. I was ready to vote now until you said. I was ready, I was ready.
Oh, market rain.
Market rain.
I'm sure you guys don't want to hang around too much longer, so I'm ready to start. Uh, this is one of the exhibits, so it's got to stay with us, right?
I said that, that part of it changed my mind.
One twenty.
Yep, I'm good. Come on down. You're the next contestant on the three hour application. Let me get the right file. Okay, August Sainsbury Jr. on behalf of Go Permit, agent of CBS Pharmacy, which is the next application. When you introduce yourself for
Kevin Going, representative of Go Permit.
Kevin, can you raise your hand to be sworn in by the chairman?
Swear to tell the truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So can you please just state your background, experience and what you're going to testify to tonight?
I've been in the sign business for forty-four years. Fabricating, selling. I own my own company. I've been representing Go Permit and my own company, variances and octative boards for twenty plus years. I've probably been in front of boards for twenty plus times.
Now, you've never testified before this board, correct?
Not, not in front of this board. I've been other parts of New Jersey, upstate viewer, Long Island.
And you're familiar
I've actually, I've seen.
Is that good or bad?
He's survived.
Can you tell us, you had an opportunity to review the the actual extensive exhibit, which listed each particular sign and the deviation of those signs?
So CBS is rebranding all their stores. And what they've basically done is they're adding a heart logo. It's part of that whole health initiative. No smoking, heart, you know, heart disease. So they've added everything on one of their signs. So what we're doing basically is an apples for apples replacement. One sign comes down, one sign goes up. You're actually less square footage on the signage. By adding the heart, the signs have actually gotten a little bit smaller.
So you changed some of the fonts, correct?
Same the fonts change and when you put everything together, it just forced everything to get a little bit smaller. On your monument signs, your ground signs, those all stay the same size. You've got four wall signs up there. Two of them reduced by one square foot each. Two of them reduced by fourteen square feet each. So and they want to add a banner behind the glass over the front entrance. If you look at it, right now you've got a total of about four hundred eighty-eight square feet. Now it's got a total of four hundred ninety-three square feet. Only additional sign is a hanging banner behind the, the glass window. So as you walk in, it's set back about two feet from the glass. And all it is, is their heart logo. So that's really the additional sign.
And I think we've seen it because it's all, it's there, I guess, already. Why that happened, I don't know. But it is there. I'm not going to lie, it is there. I didn't, I didn't put it there, but you know, I think honestly, and I, I guess to step backwards and why we're here and how we got here. This application for CBS was brought before the board, I think in maybe two thousand twelve? Sound right?
Yes.
So two thousand twelve was before the board. This board had original jurisdiction over it and there were a variety of sign relief variances that were granted. And any change in sign at this point in time is going to trigger a review by this board each and every time. And as pointed out by the planner, there's a couple of specific ordinances that were triggered. Forgetting about the heart banner for a second. So if there was a pharmacy hours and you swap it out and you put the heart on it, it changes anything stylistically, you're back before the board, even if it's a lesser amount of square footage, which it essentially is in this circumstance. And in fact, the, as he testified to, there's really only what a five square foot difference, I think you mentioned? And, and that means because we've kind of saved it along the way in some of the other signs that are throughout. So it's just one monument sign, pull it off, put it on, pull it off, put it on, and it just got swapped out through the entire building. I think there was actually one small sign that was eliminated. But essentially really the newest thing is that heart that's hanging over the, the open glass area. And that pushes it up over the prior four hundred eighty-eight square foot that was granted. And, you know, I guess it's consistent with their branding message. We've seen it. And I, I think that's really, you know, how we got here. And the, the question is whether or not, you know, I guess you have a twofold question. The first question in my mind would be, okay, let's look at what was there, what we swapped out. Is that a problem? I would hope to submit that that should not be a problem because obviously we've reduced the size of things and it's really the same name, same everything. There's no change in lighting. There's no change in color scheme. There's really no change other than some stylistic font and obviously the heart shape itself. More branding. And then obviously the major change essentially for this is the heart branded sign that's over it. So, you know, I think that's really the, and I'm kind of trying to move it along in some aspects because obviously I know you guys have been here a long time. We're happy to stay as long as you like. Answer as many questions as you like.
Set down some communication.
Yes.
Been around and there was a lot of discussion and pushback back when CBS was granted this. Because CBS has probably double the amount of signage as any.
They definitely have more signs. Yeah. Yeah.
And dealing with the downtown and all of the businesses coming, it is a constant challenge for us because the other applicants want to match it. And it's a, you know, we have a really tough time. So I don't have a problem with the swap out in the heart, but personally I am, I don't like the thing in the glass window. I think it's overkill. CBS has so much signage in that block and I'm worried that if we grant one more sign to them, we're going to have Route twenty-two on Springfield Avenue with our other vendors because we've, we've helped people at bay with not letting them get as many signs as CBS has. But I think we're going to have a really tough time keeping them at bay if we give CBS one more sign.
Understood.
And I just, I don't think it hurt. I mean, the heart is going to be enough. There's so much signage around you guys. I don't think it'll hurt you to not have there.
I understand how you feel.
That would just be my two cents.
Would this be an opportunity to change the dimension, the size of the time that are there?
They're taking some of theirs a little smaller anyway, so you can't really, we can't reneging what's there. So.
Well, if, if you, if you remove the banner from the equation, you're actually going to have twenty, thirty, thirty square feet less of signage.
So you're okay.
Yeah, I know. So the Summit in New Providence has even smaller signs, signs than what we do. And so can we get closer to that? Just, just reduce the size a little bit because they're so glaring to
Well, like I said, the two largest signs you're talking about right now, they do get smaller. You're limited in the width. Once you add that heart logo, the width stays the same, but to get to that, it needs to get smaller in height. So two main signs do reduce fourteen square feet each.
It's not a lot. I'm trying to figure out which is the new.
Maybe just reduce.
The new heart is the one over the center of the light.
Yeah, I mean, eventually you just can't do it. It's too glaring, it's too small.
No, no, I'm sorry, the new sign, the additional sign.
It's an additional sign is the, is the glass over the entrance.
Locking the doors is going to sit the door to the glass now. It's there now?
It's there now. It's there right now.
That falls, that falls under, under ordinance section five point ten B three, window sign. Now, I don't have the definitions in front of me, but I bet you.
I don't have them in front of me.
I'm, I wonder what the definition of a window sign, if it's so far back from the window, is it a window sign? I think I remember reading that if you can see it, it becomes a sign. So it also has a twenty-five twenty-five percent of the window area. So in my report, I asked, what is the window area? And what is twenty-five percent? Because technically that would be what is permitted.
And it's more, it's more than twenty-five percent.
I know it is, but.
But it's also, they, they're already, they've got too many signs all.
It is.
There's a number of sign issue that they've already violated. We gave them a variance for. So it doesn't matter about this window sign because they've already got twenty signs.
Now is there, I, I don't know the ordinance as well as you do. Does the ordinance specify?
Have it here.
How many signs?
For sign, you only have like, I think.
Okay, okay. So then you, you do have that issue.
This is.
Yeah, okay. So actually I'm not listing another variance that's need. You're, you're, okay, thank you.
If we were to move on from, and I don't know, is that a general consensus? Is that a general consensus? That extra sign is not something?
No extra sign, but the other.
Okay. So I mean, I think then that's fine. Let's just call it, let's call it a day on the extra sign. We'll take that down and, and we just swap out the other ones and we're at the four, whatever.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
No vote or anything?
Exclusion of the window heart sign over the center of where?
It's eliminated.
Second.
Beautiful.
With the new wall, right?
Yes.
See the, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Maderos?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. Kingsley?
Yes.
Mr. Popolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Motion carries seventh.
Thank you, guys.
Boy, you know how to slice that up. Though, though, though I am, I am a survivor of quadruple bypass, so the heart does have some meaning to me. I, I would have seemed to see two criteria.
Heart chip.
Yes.
I, I, I probably got a whole.
Oh, no. It's a sign like three, four.
Let's not go.
Let's not do it again for a long time. We have to make these decisions, sorry. We have to work in the house. Yeah, I don't know. It's the second meeting. We're doing a nameless space.
Subdivision, that's a minor one.
And nobody gets attention.
So, yeah.
And that was before I got involved.
I never think that's a CBA. I, I just, I just think I had never dealt.
Here's your question.
He comes, he comes too competitive.